All right, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It's right now 9:36 a.m. on Friday, the 29th. Today, we're going to be doing a study session on the corporate fund budget for 2022, 2023. And we're going to start off with one of our favorites, the 20th District Court. Go ahead.
All right, good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
And good morning, council members, Mr. Mayor. What you have, we're going to start with the District Court, page 26 in your book. And of course, the court goes over multiple operating funds, and we'll touch on all those as we go through the presentation. But in the general fund, as you've alluded to, Mr. Chair, the District Court starts on 26. We're looking to appropriate $2,292,408 for the upcoming fiscal year, '22, '23. Within that amount of requested appropriation, we have 16 full-time professional positions at $780,000. We have 14 part-time positions, $220,000. And of course, we have two, you are blessed, with two District Court judges. And with that, we pay upfront $45,000 apiece for each judge, and the judges, then the state of Michigan reimburses us 100% of those costs. As we've discussed in other line items, in other budgets, we're moving in the longevity for $13,170. We're moving in the health and life piece within the personal services section of the budget for $462,000. And again, we've added the employer contribution for social security and pension. You can see that there in blue, line item 101, 130, 726, 000, for another, where am I here, $306,000, 306, 775. As you move down to the page 26, you'll note at the bottom there, 101, 130, 818, 000. You'll find two magistrates that are contractual, $43,200 total for those two individuals. And on page 26, you'll find court fees, which is, basically what you're doing is, these are professional people that don't work for the court but are used by the court, attorneys, jury fees, driver instructors, driver instructor programs that are coming out. These types of fees are coming out of the court fees line item there, 130, 804, 000. And as we move down to page 27, you'll note that we have MIDC grant expenditures, $10,000. That is our grant match, and we will get to the MIDC fund later on in this presentation. But that is our match to that grant for 10 grand. What that does is that allows us to, it pays for attorneys who are representing indigent folk, okay, that come to the court. And we get it, the judges and Michelle have done a great job coming up with this MIDC grant. It is a really nice grant. And these revenues, which I'll explain in a moment when we get there, fund indigent attorney fees, which is terrific. But that's our match, the 10,000. And then, as we come through, to maintain the building, we have $73,000 set up for repairs and maintenance, we have travel and education, and we have legal library fees, which is a must, have to have that. And that brings us down to the $2.292 million. Any questions on page 26, 27 of the District Court budget?
Why is the repair and maintenance so high?
Well, I can tell you on the $73,000, you have in there boiler fee, maintenance and repair, you have Johnson Controls is in there.
We have service contracts with these people, too. And this is the point that I've been making for years. We're buying service contracts, and as far as I'm concerned, we're not getting any, our value out of service contract. Service contract is supposed to be a set fee, and they came out and do this, and it seems like we pay even travel time when they come out and do their regular maintenance. And this is ridiculous.
Well, I think that's what we're paying for here, is the regular maintenance, and they're coming out.
I understand that, but when you buy a maintenance fee, you don't pay that stuff. I've worked with service contracts for many years, sir.
No, no, let me explain. You're making that contractual payment for the year.
Correct.
Okay, it's not an addition over and above, it's Johnson Controls is presenting their invoice for the year.
But this is, but this is what I'm saying. We buy service contracts.
Yep.
And we're just giving away the store. We've got to negotiate better with these service contracts, because when I buy a service contract for $50,000 a year, don't tell me you're going to, I got to pay you to come here to do the job that you're supposed to do on top of that service contract, in that service contract.
That's not my understanding.
I've seen it, and that's what I've been fighting for many years.
Well, what I'm, my understanding, looking at this, is we bought the service contract, and we're paying our, but you're not fronting the 100% fee, you're paying that quarterly fee for that year.
Correct, I understand that. But I'm just saying, the way these service contracts are set up, we're not getting a big value for our buck.
Understood.
Okay, so that's, I want to make that clear in this budget meeting, that when we get, start getting service contracts, I'm not going to be approving them if they're not written right.
Very good. Okay, good point.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
My main question is, there was, on part-time, we were at $212,000 for the amended budget for 2021, '22. And then the activity, then the projected was 128, so it was quite a bit less, about maybe 45% less than what was it originally amended budget for, for 2021, '22. But then now we're back up to 220,000. Question for you, is that due to COVID that we had quite a bit of a drop in part-time and then not going back up?
Yeah, you figured during COVID, we had to stop our warrant collection officers from going door to door, because we had regulations and guidelines that we had to do due to COVID. Our work program had to cease, you know, due to work or due to COVID. Also included in this 220,000 is a grant position that is funded through the grant, but it's considered part of our part-time, so we pay it, it's just charged to us, but it comes out of the grant. And that's, I think, $32,000, so.
Out of the 220.
Out of the 220. So it will be, it'll be lower, if you look at, it's like 189 for my part-time folks, once we get to full operations. So we're hoping we'll be at full operations, get the work program back up and running, get my court collection, you know, so we can get some collections back going for the court.
How many part-time employees do you have?
We have 14. That includes security. So we have a rotating man, it's like eight, seven men that rotate, you know, and that's the majority of my part-time.
Is that the guys at the front door?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Chair.
The fines and costs from the court, that's under revenue?
That is correct, sir. If you want to take a look at that, I believe it's on page five.
And for administrators, the fines and costs have been way down, fewer tickets being written, people aren't driving, and.
Um, well, yeah, okay.
Page, I'm sorry, page eight, if you want to see the fines and forfeiture fees, page eight. And what we did to set up that number, that's an average of the last two full years without COVID. So that would be 17, 18, 18, 19. And then, of course, 19, 20, we ran into COVID. But the 3.191 million is basically an average of those two full years prior to COVID.
And it includes tickets, I presume, that are for the building department, et cetera, et cetera.
The building department.
Or ordinance, I'm sorry, ordinance.
Yeah, I'll leave that up to, I believe so, but I'll leave that up to Michelle.
Yeah, we, I mean, it includes the fines that we do collect from the ordinance department. You got to figure that's a very small portion of our, you know, tickets that we get, and you might get 300, 400 a year that we will collect on, or they get resolved, or they, you know, come into compliance where there's no fine that is getting paid for those. So the majority of our fines and costs that are collected for the city are, unfortunately, is for traffic tickets.
Right.
Criminal cases, misdemeanors, if there's fines that are assessed at that point in time, we collect those. Unfortunately, those numbers have been way down. Our civil cases have been skyrocketed up, which is your general civil, landlord, tenant, small claims, filing fees, there's no revenue in filing fees, they're so minimal, the majority of it goes to the state. So as long as, you know, the caseload's been down, because you figure in 2021, well, 2020, when we had COVID, when it first came, that was March, that was towards the end of the fiscal year, and our caseload at the end of 2020 was 16,700. We had a revenue of 2.8 that year, and that was, you know, towards the end of, you know, because we missed out on pretty much March, we dead stopped, so March, April, May, you know, we didn't really collect anything, because we were pretty much closed for business. And then in 2021, they wrote, we had about 20,800 caseload, but our, and then the revenue was 1.9 million at that point in time. And right now, in 2022, as of March, end of March, I figure we're about 5,100 with our caseload. So if we, you know, do the trends with that, we're going to be just a little more than we were last year, you know, so it just depends on, you know, caseload. Caseload is everything for us. I mean, we can't, you know, collect if we don't have cases.
Thank you.
And then the indigent criminal defense, I mean, every court gets that, and then who, are there assigned attorneys, or do you rotate?
We have, it's like a queen or king for the day, five, like Monday through Friday, we have somebody in, we have a rotating basis, it's like five attorneys or five, you know, firms, so that one is in all week this week, and then next week, we have another one in. But when somebody pleads not guilty on a case, and the case proceeds, and they want a court-appointed attorney, that comes from a different list, so it's not from the king or queen for the day, as of right now.
So they talk to the people in custody and try to get them to plead out right there?
Yeah, so our king and queen for the day, they handle all first appearance, so all arraignments, free of charge, it's paid through this grant, so everybody has representation free of charge to them. And then if they go to court, in custody, everybody who's in custody, everybody has a chance to speak to the attorney. Of course, the person has an opportunity to waive, but we choose, we don't give them that option, we make them talk to the attorney. If they don't want to talk to the attorney, then that's on them. Then, excuse me, and then if they should go to court after speaking with the attorney, and they still continue to plead not guilty, they don't work out a plea at that time, then they tell the judge, they would like a court-appointed attorney, and at that time, we will appoint them attorney through the indigent office, we have a regional office.
The, I mean, IDC saves the city a lot of money.
Oh, yes, yes. We had, this last grant that we did was 200,000, 10,000 of it was, we had to do local, was our local match, which is what David was talking about, and then 190 of it is to pay the attorneys, pay the court officer who works for us to work with the attorneys on the ground, so.
And then how many court officers are there?
We have two full-time court officers for each judge, we have one part-time court officer who helps with the courtrooms, he's only here like 18. So we have three court officers, two and a half, and then we have the one halftime, part-time MIDC court officer. All he can solely work on is with the attorneys and MIDC functions due that it's a grant position.
Okay, all right, great. And then you're still getting all the first party auto no-fault cases, or has that died down?
No, they're still coming, yeah. Hopefully, we're hoping to see, every year, we say, maybe this is going to be the year they'll slow down.
Yeah, they changed the law, but.
I know, but we still have, you know, we still had, maybe they have a tad, but we, I have such backlog from COVID and everything, so we're super behind on our, you know, the backlog with civil cases.
Weren't they doing court cases via Zoom or anything?
We are, but everything wants to go to a jury trial, and we were halted on jury trials.
I'm talking about when we were.
Oh, yeah, for a few months until we got it up and running, we were doing just minimal, just, you know, essential cases, and then slowly working our practice into being able to function via Zoom. Right now, we handle, we're pretty much back in person with the majority of our cases, except for civil infraction cases are via Zoom, they're still virtual, because we can handle more, get our more bang for our buck doing virtual with that. Pretty much everything else is in person, well, slowly getting to in person, because we had to stagger for a bit, but.
Well, let me ask you a question. When people get, say, for instance, parking tickets on trash day pickup, do those go to the magistrate, or do they go to the judge?
They, well, when you receive a ticket, you, the defendant has the option to, when they request a hearing, to request an informal or formal hearing. If that person does not make a recommendation at that point in time, it's automatically set for an informal hearing, unless they request a formal hearing, then it goes right to the judge. The reason to go to an informal hearing first is you have the right to appeal. So if you don't like what the magistrate's decision, you can appeal it to the judge. If it goes right to the judge, and you want to appeal the judge's decision, it's got to go to circuit court. So this is why we try to start at the lower level and work our way up.
Okay, so from here forward, for all the councilmen and women, let's try to keep it on just the budget questions, because I think we're going off into different subjects that have nothing to do with the specific budget. So let's stick, no, no, I'm not referencing you specifically. We've all done that, myself included, so let's try to stick, and I know it's kind of fun to find out, to have interaction with different departments, but let's try to stick with just the budget questions. And if you have non-budget questions, of course, go at it, get ahold of the director, sit with them for two hours and have fun.
Mr. Chair, one last, one last thing about page 26 on the budget for the District Court. Please remember, both judges are state employees, they are not local employees, they are state employees.
Right.
Okay, very good.
So for those that, they're not paid by us directly, for those that are not familiar with that, okay.
All right. Any other questions on 26, 27, or page eight, as, all right, let's move along then. We're going to move to page 92, under the yellow tab, which is the MIDC fund. And bear with me here as I move, change my.
That's on page 92.
Okay, yeah, this is the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission Operating Fund, this is a special revenue fund. The grant is for 190,451. As we talked about, and as Michelle has alluded to in her discussions, we have set up our $10,000 match in the general fund. The revenues have been appropriated. The expense for 190,451 is on page 92. You can see here, we are 156,000 for attorney fees, 31,250 to help, we have a part-time staffer that assists the attorneys, we get reimbursed for his time. And there is also the employer, there's a transfer for the social security piece of the 31,250. That all comes into 190,451. Any questions here on this grant, on this fund?
Controller, just, is that a fund that comes in, like, is this, honestly, I don't remember it from in the past, is that a new one, or is that?
It's been since about 2018.
Okay, and then every year, we automatically get this amount? We have to reapply?
Yeah, we have to apply every year, actually, that's what we're working on right now, is the new compliance plan, so.
Get denied, or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, as long, the state will not probably deny it, I mean, they're going to work on something, because they're very big on wanting to have representation for everybody, so.
Okay.
Michigan was one of the states that did not have this, so this, these are all different plans that were approved, you know, through the state.
Beautiful, thank you. Any other questions from council members?
Okay, we'll move along then.
Moving along.
We're going to go, the last fund is on page, page 86, 86, which is in front of the, just in front of the yellow tab. What you have before you is the Building Authority Fund. What happens here, through fines and fees and levies at the District Court, dollars come into the building fund, and these dollars are then transferred, operating transferred over to the PIP fund in order to pay for the Justice Center debt. As you can see, we're asking to appropriate 95,000, that is consistent with prior years. And does the council have any question here regarding the Building Authority, Building Fund, 105?
How many more years do we still have on that debt?
Oh, I do have that. 2031, sir, 2031, June 30th, 2031. Any questions here?
All right.
Okay.
See none. So at this particular point, before we go into the next section, which is the Fire Department budget, first of all, Michelle, thank you, great job as always.
Too bad you had to wake up so early, that's Dave's fault, don't blame you.
Really, I have to still go back to work.
Work, what, you know, I don't use four-letter words. I'm retired, it's Saturday, every day but Sunday.
I'm envious of that.
And thank you to the judges, magistrates, and all the employees at the courts. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
I have to tell the council, Michelle did a great job.
Yes, she did.
We worked hard on her budget, and she came through each and every time with information. I was very impressed, outstanding, just outstanding.
I was watching her rattle off all these numbers just off the top of her head, I'm like, hey, let's go out and get into accounting. Good job, good job. Well, actually, before you leave, Michelle, I'm sorry, my fault. So at this point, I'm going to go to questions in regards to court, so just in case somebody may have a question, I'm sorry, chief. Anybody in the audience have any questions for court? See none? Anybody on Zoom have any questions for the court? Is anybody on Zoom that has a question for the court? Nobody? All right. Are you ready for Zoom?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Michelle.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Now, next up is our popular fire department, Chief Ogan, welcome.
Chief, good morning.
Morning, chief.
Good morning.
Hopefully, everybody works safely today.
Yes, hopefully everyone stays safe.
And this is on page 62.
That is correct, Mr. Chair, page 62 of your general fund budget. What we, where we are is this, oh, I'm on my notes here, all right. The Fire Department budget, we are looking to, we're looking to appropriate $11,330,175. By the end of this presentation, that number will change, and as we go through the line items, I will bring up the changes that need to be made to the budget, and of course, we'll be happy to answer any and all questions. The $11,330,175 supports and pays for 59 professional fire staff, including three open positions, and one full-time clerical staffer. Now, with that being said, we have, here's our first adjustment. When I put the budget together, I made a mistake, and I apologize. If you look on line item 101, 335, 706, 000, in the blue section there, you'll see salary T.
335, what is it?
101, 335.
Top of the first page.
Top of the first page, 706, 000.
Okay.
Okay, got that there?
Yeah.
Okay, you'll see salary TPOAM.
I have that highlighted.
That's the mistake. So that number should be 42,000, that should be double. You're looking at 41,268. What I did, this, this.
How much is that?
It should be 41,268, basically double.
Which line?
It'll be in the footnote.
Under salary TPOAM. Page six, page 62, about three, four lines down.
Yep.
Thank you.
Under longevity.
See it, thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay, so that number should be 41,268. What I did was, this deals with the ordinance department, there's a staffer that comes from a different department that assists ordinance. I thought it was the fire department personnel, it wasn't, it was the mayor's office. So the 41,268, that line item will be increased to 41,268, and we're going to take the same amount away from the mayor's office full-time staffer, and I know you had seen that budget last week, but that, there'll be no effect in the total budget, because what we take away from the mayor's department will go back to the fire department.
Counselor Chair.
Okay, so, go ahead, do you have a question?
My question is just, what is the reason of doing it? I mean, the budget's the budget.
Because, because when the payroll system hits the line item, okay, and it'll charge, everybody's coded to a certain department, and in accordance with the law, you want to make sure that you have the correct appropriation in the line item, so you don't go over it.
Okay, yeah, I mean.
Good question, that's a good question.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I had a couple of questions. First question is on overtime. So that went from the amended budget of 21, '22 of 400,000, and then the projected activity went quite a bit up to 734,000 for overtime, and then we're back to budgeting to 400,000, which is more, which is more along the lines of the norm. But the question I have for the chief, or maybe for our controller, Dave Saputa, quite a bit of a jump in the projected activity in overtime, why is that?
So, so what happened last year, we had, there were a couple of factors that was, but mostly there were three, the biggest thing is there are three openings all year long that we couldn't get filled. And so we have a minimum staffing that we have to keep, because you can't have a one-person ambulance, that doesn't work as well. So, so in trying to keep, keep the staffing at the appropriate levels, we have to go to overtime. So first of all, we were short three positions, and so that, even though the overtime is up, there is some savings in salaries as a result of that. The other big factor was COVID. Every time someone tested positive or had a close exposure, there were required, I mean, at one point to take 10 days off, you couldn't come back, and that's after a positive or negative test and everything else, so there was a lot of absences relating to COVID. And then on top of that, we had a handful of long-term injuries, that was another big hole in our, in our budget. And so having said that, we are trying to recoup some of this money through federal funding, we're in the process of applying for.
And you still have three open positions, are you having a hard time?
Everyone, everyone in Southeast Michigan, everyone across the country is having a hard time, but we do have some, some strong leads, we've changed some of the ways that we're recruiting, we're actually looking for, we've dropped some of the requirements that we had, the college education, minimum number of credits, we've got rid of that. If, if we have someone with a paramedic license, we'll actually put them through the fire academy now, which is, we can't do it vice versa, because the paramedic academy takes about a year, and from the people who start a program, usually about 50% complete the program with a medic license, and so that's a big investment, having someone that ends up not qualified to work for us. So, but if we start with, as a paramedic without the fire training, we could send them to the fire training, it's.
So this high amount here is directly correlated to the COVID situation that you don't anticipate? Because I'm looking at it, chief, it looks like it may happen, again, with three open positions, it looks like you may have, you know, high overtime again, but then your requested budget is at 400,000, which is the same as, well, it wasn't pre-COVID, but at least beginning of COVID. So I'm just wondering, is there a chance it may go into that high of a number on overtime again?
You know, there's, I can't guarantee that we'll get the people, but I do believe that we'll, that we'll recruit some firefighters. Usually, usually we're, we recruit from other departments, a lot of, a lot of, most of the fire, of the hires we've had have come from other departments, even people with seven, eight years at other departments have come here, when they've taken a look at specialty pensions in particular, compared to the situation they're working in, this is a much improved situation, so they make the, make the leap over here. And so that's what's happened in the past, and I anticipate that to continue to happen. I know we have a couple of leads, we're always out recruiting people, we're now doing paramedic ride-along students, we have to do so many hours of riding along, and we're aggressively recruiting them to come and ride with us, which is another way we've gotten some full-time workers, just to have them work with us for a while, and kind of see what our department is about, and they, then they tend to stay once we get them in the doors, so.
Okay. And I have another question for you, chief, on contractual services, we had projected activity at 97,000 for '21, '22, but then the requested budget is 170. Even though the amended budget previously for '21, '22 was at 164, but what actually was used was 97,000 under contractual services, so why such a high jump?
So we, we have a big jump because we started billing, I don't know if you remember, but AccuMed, we used to take that bill, AccuMed is our EMS billing service.
Right.
And we pay a percentage to them for everything that we collect. We used to take that directly out of our rescue run income line, which was incorrect, so we moved that to contractual services, so that was a big jump, that's $90,000. And then another thing, we used to bill out of our rescue run revenue account, which again was incorrect, was something called a QUAP, it's a service tax that we pay to the state of Michigan, every ambulance service does, and that is another $15,000 that's coming out of there. So if you add those two things up, that's why you see such a large jump in, in that line item.
And then last question I have, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, before you go on, and again, what you want to do is you want to show gross revenues, gross expenses, show the true cost of the department, show the true cost of the revenues, and that also helps you with accounting principles.
Right.
You want to show, you want to show your true, true revenue, true expense.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next one, chief, there's a huge grant, and this is an AFG grant, that's on page 63, the second blue section up from the bottom. And the projected activity was 91,000, but now the project, the requested budget is 882, can you describe a little bit about that one?
Sure.
776 specifically.
Yeah, so there's $600,000 of that would be a new fire pumper, which is, we have, we have two pretty old fire trucks that, one of them will, will be gone next year, but we'll still have one, it's, it'll be a 1994 that we're trying to upgrade from. And so we have, we've submitted a budget, and we submit for engines every year, or pumpers, and, and, you know, sometimes we get them, sometimes we don't, but that, that was $600,000, so we did budget for it in case we are successful with that grant.
That's the one that we keep getting repairs on all the time, right?
Yeah, we have two of them that are, that are continually getting repairs.
I see them all the time, repairs.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Educational issues.
Are you able to solve it when it's doing it in a time zone?
No, I have, I have a question here on, on capital outlay. We've got lease vehicles, forty thousand. How many of those, how many vehicles do we have for forty thousand a year?
So we have, how many are leased? Five or six? Don't have my, don't have my sheet in front of me. We have, one, two, all of them, we have seven vehicles total, seven staff vehicles, and five of those are leased.
And, and those are driven home?
Not all of them, no. So the, three of them are not, there's, you have the battalion chief and the two utility vehicles stay at the station, so those are the pickup trucks, and those ones stay at the station, and then we have two fire inspector vehicles that are driven home because they respond directly to a fire, and the EMS vehicle, which is the same thing. All the staff will, will respond to fires off duty, that's part, that's part of.
So seven vehicles at forty thousand?
Correct.
That's a lot of money.
So, now, just, just as some background, like, we've done this with, with enterprise, I mean, we, we don't care how we acquire the vehicles, but enterprise has come in, and we've all been very happy with the presentation that they've given. The vehicles that we've got have been less than state bid pricing when we've done this, and, and it's, even though it's marked as a lease, it, it's not, it's not a true lease.
Those are the fleet ones, right?
Yeah, it's, and, and it's not like a lease like it would be if, if one of us leases a car, it's something, it's, it's very different, it's almost like, you know, at the, at the end of it, you, you own the vehicle, it's, and, and, I mean, it's, it's almost a means.
So these, these, we're going to own?
We, we can, we can make a payment at the end of these to own them, and.
Just like any lease vehicle that if I buy at the end, I can buy the vehicle at whatever the residual is.
Right, but, but.
But it's not, I'm sorry, Chief, it's not a residual as you would like a red carpet lease, right? It's actually, it's like a buck or something, it's a very few bucks that you purchase.
I mean, we're, we're talking four hundred and seventy-six dollars a month for each vehicle. Are they, is that already been equipped with everything that you need in them, or do we pay more for to equip them after we give them?
It depends, it depends on the vehicle, but, so some of them we, we did have to equip, but, but it's not, th- these don't have like a ton of equipment on them. They just, I mean, they have some light bars and a radio, but we already have the radios most of the time, and so we, we do install those on them. But their price also includes all of their maintenance, oil changes, even brakes, anything that we don't pay, that's, we don't pay.
Brakes and all of that stuff?
Brakes, everything.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's all, that's all included.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Okay. Councilman Beadun? Well, my, my question was, I know you said potentially we're going to budget for, will we sell those actual fire trucks?
The ones that, that, well, so, we, we will try. I can tell you that one of the times we, we actually, we had to, we sold it for scrap, and it was a working fire truck, and we had to sell it, it was like eighteen hundred dollars or something, and it went to get scrapped. Now, another one that was the same, we actually got fifteen or fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars for it. We've tried to donate them, we've tried to give them to schools, we tried to, literally, I mean, when we say it jokingly, to give it to Greenfield Village as a, as a, yeah, as from the, from the nineties, and it's not, yeah, we've, and we've given it to fire schools. One of the trucks was going to actually go to South America somewhere, they were going to put it on a barge, and, but the problem is, they're, they're made for hydranted areas. We have only a five-hundred gallon tank, and so some of the more rural areas that might need a fire truck need more water than just five hundred gallons.
I'd say there's got to be somebody that needs a fire truck.
That's what I, I thought we could try to give away, but, I mean, if we get fifteen thousand for it, that's fine, which is what we got the last time, but I didn't, to have it scrapped, you know, we, we get attached to these trucks and give it off.
I mean, none of those parts can be sold, like the pumps, uh.
That's, that's what we thought.
Hires if they're good.
We, we tried to even give it to our, our, our repair company for that, that kind of purpose, and, and they have, but I mean, the, the trucks, I mean, they're, they're pretty old, they're, they're, and they're pretty well-used by the time.
Well, I know they're used, you know, as far as age goes.
Yeah.
Those things are built like tanks.
Right, right.
But the use is hard.
Yeah, yeah, and, and then, you know, the fire truck, you know, it's got all the plumbing in it, and so imagine working on your, your house plumbing that, that actually drives down the road, and you know, when you get rust and everything, and when you go to work on one part, another pipe might crack as you're.
That's why you got to be certified to work on those vehicles.
Right, right, so, yeah, we, I mean, we'll, we'll do our best to, to sell and get the most we can for it, obviously, but.
Thanks, Chief.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, on my end, I'm all set. Councilman, is it all set?
One other question.
Go ahead. I know here we said we, we have fifty-nine employees, three opening positions, which we're budgeting for, and one clerical. Is that traditionally what we've had in the past?
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay, Chief, is that what we, is that what? So let me ask you, do you think with lowering the overtime, three is enough?
Oh, hiring three?
Correct.
Yeah, if, if we get our three, then, then that, then that overtime number will be good.
Okay, and we'll be at the budgeted, uh?
And we'll be at the budgeted amount, yeah.
Okay.
So that's just the big question, is, is finding the three people, and I, and I think, I think we're, I'm pretty optimistic that we're going to find them.
Okay.
Overtime's down though from years past, and weighed out from?
Yeah, it, it has been up to a million dollars in the past, when we were down manpower before, and you can see a direct correlation of, you know, when we have manpower, when we don't, and, and the overtime, it's, they're directly related to each other.
All I know is you guys are, are, I, I, I have no words to explain how wonderful your team is.
Well, we appreciate that, thank you.
I mean, you, you make a phone call, you guys, and you're Johnny-on-the-spot, guys are professional, they know what they're doing. You know, I've had relations with them per, on personal level, coming to my home for either myself or, or another person that's living in my home, or my mom. Fantastic job, fantastic job, I mean, just absolute.
That's good to hear, thank you.
I think it's better than going to a hospital, to be honest with you.
Well, that's good to hear, yeah, yeah, there.
Okay, any other questions, maybe from the audience, before the chief leaves us? All right, nobody there? Anybody on Zoom that has any questions? For the fire chief, or our controller? All right, seen none? Thank you very much. Chief?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
There is one other adjustment to the budget that, that we need to make.
The fire?
To the fire, yes, okay, and that comes to the, if you go to page sixty-two of your, of your general fund budget, you'll see line item, the fringe benefit line item, one oh one, three three five, seven two six point zero, zero, zero. Okay, you'll, this is the first of two changes that we have to make, and it's good news, very good news. So if you look at the second line in the blue, you'll see the employer pension, Public Act three forty-five contribution. We've, when I put the budget together back in end of March, we had estimated that the fire department's, that the employer contribution for the fire department would be two point six five seven, two zero nine million dollars, as you can see there on your line. You, you have that there?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So the actuary report came out last week, late last week, on Friday. I received it Wednesday afternoon, and that number is going to drop. So the actuary came in, so initially I had, when you look at the police department and the fire department, I had estimated six million, zero forty-five in total employer contribution. The actuary came in at five million, hang on, what's that number, five, what did I do with it? Five million, one hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine thirty-five. So basically, an eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollar drop, which is great news.
So how much does it drop for the fire department? We'll change the one on the police later, but how much is it for the fire department?
Three, it's going to drop three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, and the new number will be instead of two point six five, seven million dollars, it'll be two point two seven nine million dollars. Okay, which is great news, so.
Just to clarify, the five-figure would have been, Councilman, for the combined police.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
Landfire.
Correct.
I didn't see that number there.
Right, sorry about that, yes. I'm trying to give you the whole picture.
I'm saying, did my, my printout wrong or something?
No.
No, no, and I have a handout, will the handout help here, or do you want me to wait till we get to that section?
Wait, let's wait till we get to the police.
Very good, sir, very good. So, good news, so the actuary comes in, we get the report, and then on your, the levy, when you look at the levy, we, for twenty-one, the levy was eight dollars and eighty-nine cents for Public Act three forty-five. I had, I had recommended eight dollars and ten cents, and it looks like now it's going to drop to seven dollars and fifty-one cents, which is great news. That's about ninety dollars to a homeowner savings.
Now, the total requested budget for the fire department is going to be different too.
Yes, let me give you that number.
Please.
The new number will be ten million, nine seventy-four, eight sixty-three. That's, that's.
And those are following, that's on page sixty-four, bottom right, second from the right-hand side.
It's ten million.
Nine seven four, eight six three. That'll be the new, after these two adjustments, that'll be the new number. We originally had eleven million, three thirty. Very good, okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much, thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief, thank you.
So next up, we have our police department, we're going to be doing police, the two sixty-five fund and two sixty-six fund plus pension.
That is correct.
For those that have your budget schedules, pension was added in later on, about a week or so ago, so if you don't have it written in there, you could add it in there if you'd like to write it.
So that's page, our next one is page sixty, correct?
That is correct, Councilman. Page sixty in your budget book. There it is. Okay.
Good morning, Chief, how are you, sir?
Good, how are you all?
I'm doing fine, thank you for asking.
Okay, what you had before is the police department budget. We are asking, initially, we are asking to appropriate fifteen million, one one seven, six two six, which you can find on page sixty-one in the lower right-hand corner of your page. And this, this funds fifty-seven patrol, professional patrol officers, and within that fifty-seven, there are seven open positions. This funds twenty-six command officer professionals. This funds the chief, the commissioner slash deputy, thirteen dispatchers, which four are open, I got it right? Four? Four are open, and then there are a number of part-time crossing guards and two jailer positions that are part-time, and, and they're part of this also. And they, I don't have the exact number, but the, the dollar value we appropriate for the part-time is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
You said we have twenty-six command officers?
That is correct, sir.
But how many officers?
In total, we're looking, that's the only number I did, total. Hang on, it'll be right there, hang on.
Chief, are you familiar with how many officers total we have right now?
I got it, I got it right here, hang on. We're looking at, there, there are eighty-five total officers.
And the twenty-six is, is part of that?
Yes, sir, yes. So there, that includes the chief and the deputy slash commissioner position.
The twenty-six is a part of the eighty-five?
Yes, sir. Yes, if you.
Kind of top-heavy, ain't it? I'm thinking.
I think where the, the challenge could be in looking at the command staff here is, is the way our detective bureau is structured, in that we have detective sergeants who go out and do great work in investigations for our community, so when we look at that title, they're simply, their span of control is themselves. So that's somewhat of a unique situation that we're working on.
So before we go into questions, let's go ahead and let our controller go through the budget first, then we'll go through council questions. And again, I'd like to remind you guys, let's stick with just budget questions, and then we'll go with the audience, and then we'll go with whoever's on Zoom.
If he's going through something, and I have a quick question, can we stop him just to ask so that we're not going through it?
No, I, I think I'd rather have it this way, me and the controller spoke before we started with these budgets, we're going to let him do his full presentation, and then we'll go into questions. Go ahead.
Okay, very good. Okay, so what you have here, after staffing, we set up, as, as consistent with all of the other departments, we've set up the, the applicable longevity piece to, to the department of forty-five thousand, eight one nine, you can, you can find that in the footnote on the first line, in that first blue box at the top of page sixty. Then we've also added in the health and life insurance, when you add the two numbers together for health and life, that's another one point six two zero million. And then, then we have the employer contributions for pension, and then we also have workers' compensation costs and the employer's social security, we're looking at another four point three five seven million. And again, I want to point out the adjustment that we just went through with, with fire. On the police side, you'll see the number three million, three eighty-eight, seven hundred, in that bottom blue box on page sixty, if you can see that there, three three eight eight seven hundred. That number is going to drop to two million, nine zero seven, two forty-nine, and I won't go through the explanation again, I, I think you guys got it the last, with the fire department.
What is the final number too, just in case we could, the final requested budget?
The fin, I'm sorry, oh, the final, yes, it will be, well, there's one more adjustment that I want to.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll go to the final number. Okay, with that being said, we'll, we'll go into the capital outlay section of the budget. Well, I'm sorry, the first one is on line eight one eight, the first change is on line eight one eight zero zero zero. You'll see the blue box in the middle of the page there for contractual services, you'll see a community notification service. We had originally anticipated seventy-five hundred, that looks like it's going to run about ten thousand, so we're asking to increase the budget by approximately twenty-five hundred for the community, for the new community notification service.
And what does that entail?
There are questions for the end.
Yes, let's, let's go ahead and say that.
Am I answering or not?
No, let's, let's, let the controller continue.
Okay. Then the, the last, then as you come through, I want to point out the capital outlay, if you look at the bottom of the page, we have five patrol cars, those are replacements for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and then there's the reliable JAG grant that we get from the federal government, replace bulletproof vests, another twenty thousand dollars. And then, at this point in time, I'd like to add in another a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, and that is for body cameras. Now, I'm going to give you the full picture, and then we'll, we'll zero in because it's going to be over two operating funds. So we're looking at, in the first year, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, with a hundred and seventy of that being grant-funded, okay? So first year, three hundred and fifty thousand, which would be the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, a hundred and seventy being grant-funded, and that revenue will come into the general fund, and the, the capital outlay line item will be increased by a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. When we get to drug force, I'm sorry, when we get to confiscated monies fund, I'll bring in the other hundred and eighty thousand, and I'll point that out to you at that time for the first, and that's your first installment. For twenty-three, twenty-four, and for twenty-four, twenty-five, you'll see in the general fund an additional hundred and forty thousand each year to complete the purchases, I'm sorry, not in the general fund, in the, in the confiscated monies fund, the hundred and forty thousand for the remain, a hundred and forty thousand each of the two years for body cameras. So with that being said, when we get to confiscated monies, I'll point it out again, but we, we're going to, we're asking that we increase the capital outlay at the bottom of the page there by a hundred and seventy, which is a hundred percent funded by a grant. Okay, with that, with those two changes, and the, with those three changes, the reduction in the pension contribution, the adding of the hundred and seventy-two thousand, and the reduction in the pension contribution, the adding of the hundred and seventy-two thousand, and the adding of the twenty-five hundred, the new number for the PD would be fourteen million, eight-ten, six-seven-six. That will be on the final resolution to the council. Yes, it came down to the actuary. I, I am not the actuary. I always tried to be the actuary. If I had to start all over again, I think I would have been an actuary. But at the end of the day, those guys do their thing, and they do it well.
Is this the first time we've had this done through an actuary?
Oh, no, no, no. Every year you have it done by an actuary. Very consistent. Gabriel Roder Smith does the public safety side. And Ms. Rodwin, and then she sold her firm to a firm out in Naperville. They do the general city side.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll open up the questions, sir.
So the first, first question I had for you, and maybe this is for the chief. There's been obviously some controversy and some questions in regards to commissioner that was hired. So the question is, and I've had some residents call and ask me this, and, and I promised I would ask this question. How was the commissioner hired as far as salary-wise, when that was not originally projected as far as a part of the budget? I, I know I've heard the deputy chief's angle, but can one of you two, if you don't mind, explain how we were able to pay a commissioner that was not originally a part of the budget?
Okay, so, so you have an open position, which is the deputy retired and left.
Foils.
Right, and there's an appropriation available, because the, the deputy hasn't been here for, for the full fiscal year. That leaves an opening for a second-in-command. And those appro, those remaining appropriations are, are what's funding that position today.
And that would be at the discretion of the mayor's office to hire an additional, not an additional, a commissioner?
Council chair. It's, this is, again, it's a temporary position. This is not a full-time position. I mean, it's not a permanent position. There's no pensions. There's no, there's no pension tied to this here. So we brought him on a, a temporary basis.
Six-month basis, correct?
I'm sorry?
For six months?
Yeah, six months, six months to a year.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, the appropriation, the current appropriation will cover that expense.
Okay, and then a couple of other questions I had for you. We have, this is similar to the fire department, and I don't know if it's the same type of answer, but overtime went up quite a bit from anticipated, I mean, we're talking about almost a million dollars. Quite a bit. I do know that we're short officers, and I know it's been a challenge, so I know obviously it's a part of it. But, but even with that, to have a million dollars in overtime, to me, we have to, I don't know, we have, we have to rework this thing. Something's wrong here. That's a, that's a high amount of overtime.
Council chair, and this is some of the stuff that we have done, you know, we, we had meetings with every department. You know, we're cutting back on all the overtime. Any overtime requirement, it has to be on an emergency basis, and it has to be accountable for. So we, we are monitoring it for sure, this-
So I think you'd agree with me here, at a million, almost a million dollars, it's quite a bet.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's why we, certain people are complaining, but for not having more overtime. But we, we, we have to cut it, you know, it's, it's, it's gone out of control in the last few years.
Okay.
It's not just a PD, it's every department in the city.
Okay.
So certainly, looking at the budget slides that were presented, I was well aware the bullseye is on the police department, right? We, we have the highest overtime budget.
Actually, not, Chief, I'm sorry, not, not, actually not. There's another department, so we won't talk about that.
When those others are combined, okay. Split out individually, I could see visually, right, that, that's, it's a huge issue and almost a million dollars. I've been here about sixty days. So still very much early in the assessment phase, working with the mayor's office, trying to assess what has traditionally the overtime been spent on? Where can we find ways to, to save the community money in the overtime? Right now, we have a lot of staff who are doing a tremendous amount of good work, right? And I know you all recognize that. I go to the picture board outside the chief's office, and just from like two or three years ago, I can hardly recognize some of the people because of the overtime they're working. So it really becomes a balance of wages, overtime, staffing, so many different issues that we're trying to look at and trying to right-size. So it's, to me, it's an officer wellness issue. It is a, it's a fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers. So we're very early on in a, in a task assessment and to see where there are areas that we can start trimming down this overtime. Obviously, the overtime's been cut in the projected budget, and we're gonna work within those numbers. Now, much like the fire chief said, we can have some critical incidents happen, right, that increase our overtime rates.
You're short on officers right now, right?
We're short about seven police officers. We have at least four dispatch openings right now. We have a command opening. So, yeah, there's, there's some challenges right now, and just like the fire chief brokenhead stated, it's very hard to recruit right now, you know, in this environment. It has been for about two years. But we're doing our very best to try to fill those positions.
Next question I had, Nixle, and I'm familiar with that. I believe Dearborn uses that, too. Are we just starting that? Has that been around? Because if it's been around, it's not really honestly marketed at least enough to get it out to the residents to start using that. It's basically a notification system that I'm familiar with. But i, is that something new, or have we had it for a while, or?
It's my understanding we have not contracted with a mass notification system. This is new. I would, we have been sitting through presentations by the various platforms. And at this point, Code Red seems to be the most cost-effective for the community. So we just, in a budget meeting, kind of plugged in Nixle.
But it may be a different format.
Yeah, they're, they're about twice the cost of Code Red. And what we're looking for is a, a notification system that could be easily used, that our residents can choose the language that they receive these notifications in, both text-to-voice or voice phone calls from staff members. So there's a lot of things that, that Code Red can do for us and kind of fill that gap.
I know Nixle's been used in Dearborn, and I don't think it's too popular, but you could look into that. The last two questions that I had, five patrol cars, cars needed. I was a little concerned about that. It just seems like a lot of cars being needed in one year. Is, is there any particular reason for that? Were there accidents, or?
No, there were five vehicles in last year's budget that we have not received yet. So I don't think that we're gonna get those cars before the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, so this is part of the chip issue.
So it's all kind of this rollover. We have twenty-four vehicles that are assigned to the patrol division, two supervisors and twenty-two vehicles for our patrol officers to use. Please keep in mind, when you see mileage, and, and next year, when I have more time to prepare for the budget, I'm gonna give you the list of vehicles that we have, and you're gonna get the current mileage. So you can see firsthand, you know, where our vehicle fleet is. These vehicles are not vehicles that we drive in our daily lives, right? They are driven almost twenty-four hours a day. They're driven at speeds to catch up to violators, to handle critical incidents. So this wear and tear on our vehicles, you know, it does take its toll, and they are, it's, it's, of course, taxpayer money. So we want to make sure that we're maintaining them and that we're keeping a fleet that is reliable.
Okay, and the last question is body cameras. That's been around, like in our budgets and conversations and council meetings, seems like almost forever. So I'm, I'm gonna be blunt and direct with my question. Is the police department intentionally, and I'm being blunt, intentionally pushing this back? Or what is exactly going on? Because I, I've seen body cameras, and we've talked about body cameras before your time, chief, I, I respect that. But it's been about two, three years, maybe more, that we've been talking about this.
Yeah, I, I, I feel your concern. I, I don't disagree with the, the fact that it's been going on a long time. Keep in mind, they were looking at, the previous administration was looking at body cameras dating back to November, December of nineteen. They started a process where council approved the department to go out, right? So I'm creating a timeline in those few minutes that I get every day to try to create a timeline on where this kind of got off the rails. And in, as they're doing their due diligence, and they have a committee that's looking at what is the best use of taxpayer dollars for these body cameras and in-car cameras, and some, some cameras within the building and the storage, right? We got a grant. And that kind of seemed to kind of slow things down a little bit. I can tell you that I feel very comfortable at this point, moving in the next few weeks forward with a proposal to council on a vendor. It's very important that we choose a vendor that is very, very reliable, that is using the latest and greatest technology, and is gonna take care of us, not only for the end user, for the police officer. So if a police officer turns on their overhead lights, we want the in-car camera, and we want the body camera to come on at the same time, right? We want everything to be seamless. We want our records clerks to be able to have the very best, what's called backend client, where they can get in and redact video to send to the prosecutor's office. Or, let's say, Monday's incident, if we wanted to release video regarding that incident to the press. They get a link, and they're able to open it up. I'm dealing with DVDs right now, so I feel your frustration. And I know the officers really, really want them. So we're, I'm trying to push that ball down the field as quickly as I can, but also do our due diligence to make sure the taxpayers get the very best product.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Yes, I, I don't know if this is a question for the chief or the mayor. But when we approved the commissioner, that was just for six months. Did we extend that contract or anything?
Council, council chair? Yeah, we, we said six, six months, about a year or something. So there's a lot of things that we're working on.
I mean, but we, we, did we approve it for six months to a year?
Yeah, so we, we talked about that, yeah, a while back. So it was six months to a year.
Does a question come up that, you know, that we only did it for six months, and it got extended without our approval?
Well, this is, again, it's a, it's, it's not a permanent position. We are just bringing somebody contracts so we can get some stuff, some of the stuff that the council brought up to our attention. That's what we're trying to fix. So it's six months to a year.
And, and my other question with these cars is, how many cars are taken home and by whom?
Figured that question was coming. So looking at my notes here, five. We have myself, the commissioner, the captain. We have an opening in the captain's position, the DB lieutenant, and an on-call detective. If you include our task force officer that's in a DEA task force, they also have a vehicle that is available to them.
Council chair? So this is what we have right now currently. But even myself, I had no idea what was going on before our chief heart showed up. And we, we are trying to account for every vehicle that we have over there. And as the chief mentioned, we gotta document every mileage on every vehicle. So we're gonna have a process in place to account with every vehicle that the city owns. So that's, I know that's been a challenge in the past, and I know Councilman Muscat brought that up for the last few years. So we're, we're trying to work on a process right now.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Well, and I just want to make one thing. It was brought up before, and I know this is not much of a budgetary question, but it was asked about the mayor's car being not marked. My understanding, that car is on loan from the police department. It may not be marked according to the ordinance on how we set it up for unmarked cars or of that nature. And it's difficult for the mayor to get a car right now from any manufacturer. Just none to be found. I mean, just go to a dealership and try to buy a car. You're not doing it.
Especially at least.
Okay, thank you. That's all I got.
Council chair?
Councilman, go ahead.
A couple of things. I know I spoke with the controller, and I see here salary non-union, eighty-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars, which I believe the, if you look at right under one-on-one, three-hundred-seven-zero-six, zero-zero-zero-zero. Can you tell us who's non-union? Yes, I can. Hang on. Bear with me.
You're talking about the one-sixty-six-two-one, right?
Yeah, the very first blue.
First, very first blue.
And it says non-union.
Yes, here you go. You ready?
Sure.
That would be Ms. Janet Lucas and Mr. Lee Gavin.
Okay, perfect. So Mr. Lee Gavin is on that. And then my next question is, I know that the police chief said we're gonna be having community news. Can you give us a breakdown of what that is?
So, yeah, it's my intent, obviously, to build a multicultural and community-oriented policing agency that's data-driven, right? So I want to try to use as many platforms as I can to share that message with our community and what's going on at the police department. Ultimately, in the next few weeks, I'd love to have council come and take a tour of the building. I don't know if you have walked around the building or not, but I'd like to, at times, maybe break up so we don't have opens meetings, open meeting acts violation, but make sure that you come out and you can walk around the building and see, you know, what, what our workspace looks like as well.
Chief, with this community news that, that you brought up, which I think is an amazing idea, it brings transparency, it makes everybody feel a lot more comfortable around law enforcement, especially with, you know, with today's era. One of the things that I know other municipalities offer is a breakdown sheet to the public of what crimes happen in what areas. And so every morning, a sheet is submitted saying where calls were brought in, where an accident could have potentially happened, and it shows a district of the map, and it's sent to, you know, to a, you can be added to a email list or whatnot, or, or the council. But just, is there any, will that fall under that community news? Can we offer something that, to our residents? I know I've asked for it in the past, I was to the prior, in the past and the last year, but I'm wondering, is that something that will be added to this community since we're budgeting for it?
It's, it's certainly that will, something that we will put on the list. We are getting ready to roll out in May a transparency dashboard, which was, is gonna show a significant amount of data. But I want to make sure that that's rolled out appropriately and, and our community stakeholders get a look at this data and have the ability to ask questions before we put it on our website.
Okay, and then I know, this is maybe to the controller, just from the past, I know where, you said we're short seven employees. Are we still budgeting for the same amount that we budgeted for last year when it comes to employees? Since we don't have a detailed breakdown.
Yes, so my, my, yeah, and I don't have last year's numbers, but my understanding is, yes, we are budgeting for the, for the same amount as last year, which would include the seven open.
Okay, and then just for the record, council, council chair, councilman, as far as the commissioner goes, we didn't approve of that. That was, because it's a part-time position, if the mayor has the authority to it, so we never approved of it. We were notified about it, but we weren't, we never approved of it.
And that's fine. I just, I just brought that up. The one comment I have to piggyback on yours, when we got those, about the notifications.
Yeah.
If I'm mistaken, Mr. Gavin probably can correct me. Didn't we used to do that when you were police chief? We had someone send out emails about certain things going on in the community?
Yeah, early on, we had mass emailing, but we have an issue with our computers now, where we can't send that large amount out. So Kerry Hatton, or large, so they're limited to how many emails they can send out, so we can't do that mass mailing.
Yeah, but we did, we did do something for a while. Thank you.
I'm sorry, council chair, just one last thing, and maybe this can go to the police chief and the fire chief. I know you said that we're short on employees. As far as marketing that we are hiring, can we maybe take it to a next level of social media on, on the fire page, on the, on the Dearborn Heights page, police page? Hey, we're looking, we're recruiting, or the newspaper? Take advantage of, you know, local newspapers, the Press and Guide, the American News, whatever it is, just so that we can reach out a little bit extra. I, I'm not sure how we're doing it now. Me personally, where I read a lot of newspapers, where I'm on social media a lot, I've never seen an ad saying, hey, Dearborn Heights is firing, you know, hiring police officers, Dearborn Heights is firing fire, firefighters, or even employees in general. I think I've seen it maybe once or twice, and it may have been a share off of the Dearborn Heights community page. But if we just extend our resources out a little bit, we potentially could be there. And then I know council chair had a lot on overtime. This is just my thought. I'm all for cutting overtime, which you have to keep in mind, that a lot of these employees that start off in Dearborn Heights are very underpaid. You know, a police officer comes in making forty thousand dollars a year. Somebody wants to work a little bit of overtime, maybe we can give them a little bit of overtime. I'm not saying take the drastic amount of overtime, but I think a little bit of overtime is, it's, it's giving back to our first responders. So I'm, I'm okay with giving a little bit of overtime to our employees.
Patrol officer, max patrol officer starts out is, is at thirty dollars and seventy-five cents per hour. That's sixty-three thousand, nine sixty-eight, max patrol officer. Okay, that's after, I believe, five years of service.
Five years, it's not starting.
That's correct. On a start-
Forty-two, forty-two.
Forty, I have, on the open position, we're budgeting forty-seven thousand, nine-seventy-six-point-zero-five. That's what we're, that's what's in the appropriation bill.
Are they getting a raise? It was at forty-two, if I'm correct.
Right now, right now, we're budgeting forty for twenty-two, for twenty-twenty-two. I'm sorry. I apologize. Forty thousand.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yes, I apologize. Yes.
Yeah, because I, I, and what's funny is, we did our budget last year, and there was a breakdown of each municipality, and it shows how Dearborn Heights is all the way at the bottom. Dearborn starts off at fifty-two, Allen Park starts off at forty-seven, Redford at forty-seven, Taylor at forty-six. So, so Dearborn Heights was at thirty-seven, three-thirty-one, ten cents that last year. So I'm just saying, some, and officers coming in, and, and I'm, I'm just kind of thinking for myself, my son, I have a son at home, I got a wife, I got a dog. Thirty-seven thousand dollars, no overtime, or cutting them completely. I'm not saying that's what we're doing. But I understand that if an officer wants to maybe get extra five hours of overtime throughout the week, maybe we can work something out with them. Because thirty-seven, and I get it, they get their fringe benefits and their health, and, you know, and, and I, I completely get that. But I'm just thinking of, if we want to be competitive, we want to have the best of the best officers, you know, and I use the term that the mayor and his wife used to tell me, you want good, you pay good. So if you want to have good officers, you want to have good firefighters, you gotta pay good.
I'll, I'll just say a couple of things. One is, we do have good police officers.
Oh, we have great, the best.
And that's that balance that we talk about with officer wellness. I, I would much rather have staff when they're supposed to be off, home with their families, right? We would all rather have that. So that's the big challenge, that the mayor and HR and Mariana and the comptroller's office and I have, is how, how can we bring this balance to the police department?
Well, eh-
We outside, councilman?
I, for one, have said it many, many a times, for fire and for police, definitely we should be starting at higher salaries. And anytime you bring that forward, I'm, I'm gonna be all for it. I still think forty thousand personally, starting for police officers, in my opinion, too low. Especially when we're competing with cities like, if I'm not mistaken, Farmington had it out there for fifty-six thousand, I believe it was, starting, et cetera, et cetera. So whatever we could do to raise that. But I also know, we've had this conversation with previous chiefs in that, and I, and I know I gotta keep that in mind, in that when you have a starting salary that's a little bit higher, at the starting amount, that's a domino effect all the way through to the top. You know, as far as the pensions, as far as the fringe benefits, as far as the pay for the next level up, lieutenant, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I, I do keep that in mind, but I'm definitely gonna be always for people who put their lives on the line for us to be paid much higher than, with due respect, somebody that works at a, you know, a fast food joint. You know, definitely should be paid better. So I'm gonna be all for it. One last question for me is reserves. What's, is there any chance that we could resurrect that again in our police department?
Sure, first, my first priority is to try to get the police department fully staffed, right? Because in order to get the reserves- right? Because in order to get the reserves in, and more active, we need somebody to be in charge of that program. And right now, we're simply overwhelmed with a lot of tasks. And I'm asking officers to look, and command staff as well, to look at our roles and responsibilities through a different lens and try to be more data-driven. We pay a lot of money for Clemis, Oakland County Clemis, but we're not using the data to its fullest extent. So we're trying to get the council monthly reports, we're trying to look at a lot of things, and to now kind of pull off to use the reserves. They're outstanding resources for us. It's something that I, I really want to do, but right now, we really have to get some sworn staff in place, and we need to fully staff our dispatch center. A lot of times, our dispatchers get left out of the equation as well, and they're just as valuable to us. And they're working a lot of.
Police officers, they have to man the nine-one-one, right?
Yes, yeah. So that, there's times where we have to staff those. So it's, you know, it's, it's a challenge to try to bring people in, to, to keep them, to retain them. And our best recruiters are our staff, right? And we need them to feel good about coming to work and to feel valued in, in all respects. So they go out and recruit people to be their teammates. And that's really what, what our goal is.
Okay. Councilman, go ahead.
Where does the overtime occur? Like you said, dispatch is one. So is it that an officer's out on patrol and the next person is sick or something? Or where does the overtime occur?
It is, it's multifaceted. There's, certainly, there's a traffic safety program where officers hang over or come in early to work traffic enforcement in various areas of the community. There's a way, maybe we can save some money on that by seeking some grants for traffic enforcement. That's our number one complaint in the city, is traffic. People almost daily, maybe today's the exception, I haven't received one yet, but there's always an email or a phone call about people drag racing, about people speeding, going through stop signs. So we're doing our very best to try to address those issues, but at the same time, we're having, you know, domestic violence cases come in, and other issues where police officers are getting pulled to handle calls for service. So we have a traffic safety program that is largely funded through our general fund. Then we have leave work, which is, we've gone below our minimum staffing levels, whether it be in the dispatch center or in patrol, and we have to call people in on their days off, or in, call them to, to come into work early. And there's overtime there. And then there's critical incidents, where we have a death investigation, or an officer-involved shooting, or whatever it is, where we need to bring in additional resources to be able to effectively handle that situation. You will receive, in our, once we can get to our monthly report phase, we're going to start breaking that overtime down and where it's coming from. So you can all see that.
The officers are on fixed shifts. You know, like, I was court officer in La Bona years ago, they had to work one month days, one month afternoons, one month midnights. It just drove them all crazy.
Yeah, we don't, we don't do that here. We change shifts twice a year. There's an A and a B platoon, they work twelve-hour shifts. It is absolutely gold in recruiting. There's a lot of good things going on. I don't want to lose sight of that, right? When we interview newer, people that want to be the police now, the young, younger generation, they want external vest carriers, we have them, and they want twelve-hour shifts, and we have them. We have a defined benefit contribution, right, pension. We have good things going on. We really do.
They like twelve-hour shifts?
Yeah. They, the, the younger, because every other weekend's a three-day weekend.
Okay, well, that's.
And you get to plan, you get to plan your schedule and events and your family six months out.
Eight at seven, twelve.
Yeah. The older I got, the harder twelve-hours are. Now, as chief doing fourteens, yeah, they're even worse. So, but we'll get there.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions from council members? Hearing none. Next up on Zoom, anybody on Zoom with any questions?
Yes.
We have one from iPhone. Well, I'm sorry. Yeah, presuming it's a council member. Okay, go ahead, let him on. Well, we're going to go to residents after, after we're done with the next, with the next fund. Tom, go ahead.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right.
Tommy, you don't have to mute yourself, Tom.
I did, I'm.
No, we can hear you. I'm saying, you don't have to re-mute yourself after.
Oh, okay, yeah, all right. You know, I, I still can't get used to these requested budget and recommended budget being the same. I've, I've never seen that before. And we, we got it, we've got to know, you know, what people are asking for, who's getting everything, and who's getting a little bit of what they want. It's just, I mean, I've never seen that before. And also, the, the salaries lumped up. We have to get that before we vote on anything with budget. We got to get those salaries broken down. We have no idea what people are making. And that's, that's very important, you know, so we're approving it. There's, I'd like to know all the salaries. And on a lighter note, anyway, chief, thanks for everything you're doing. We have a E-course pre-clean-up. I'm just taking that opportunity to, and the fire department has, makes a big showing every year. It's next Saturday, May seventh, and we're wondering if you could twist some arms and get some manpower out there. I'll email you a flyer. And also.
Okay.
And a sponsoring to pre-clean-up. Please get ahold of me with what you want, you said, how you want your name on the shirts and on the signs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other, nobody else on Zoom? Okay, we're going to go ahead and, no, we're going to residents at the end. So at the end, we'll be going to residents, absolutely. And that's coming up pretty soon. So next up is the two sixty-five fund and the two sixty-six fund. This is on pages ninety-four and ninety-five.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chair. What you have here on page ninety-four is the confiscated, easy for me to say, monies fund. On ninety-four and ninety-five, you can see the projected activity in the fund for, for, on page ninety-four, and then on page ninety-five, you will see the capital outlay requests. What we're looking for here is replacing ten laptops for patrol cars, twenty-two laptops for the facility, again, a replacement. The chief is looking for, to replace ten APX handheld radios, and then you have the two hundred and forty thousand dollars for the, for the dispatch upgrade, equipment upgrade. In addition to those, those expenses that you see there, I would like you to add a hundred and eighty thousand for the, for the body cameras. And, and these dollars are being, these, these, these expenses are being funded from anticipated.
I thought that was a hundred and seventy-something for body cameras.
Hundred and seventy in the general fund, and then a hundred and eighty in the, in, because the hundreds, because the hundred and seventy is the, is being funded by a grant.
Okay.
Okay? And then the balance of what's due in the first year, three hundred and fifty thousand, the one eighty's coming out of the confiscated monies fund. Okay? Good question. Very good question. So we would add that on. This is being funded by adjudicated funds that, that would come, that are being confiscated and awarded by the court, and also the fund balance of the fund. And what we're looking at here is, initially, it was three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. With the addition of the hundred and eighty, we've moved to five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and I would be happy at this point to turn it over to council for questions.
Quick question on that. The amount there, like, three hundred and forty-nine thousand coming in from confiscated monies, that's a revolving fund. It, it almost can't be predicted, can it?
So there.
You could go on history, but.
No, there's, there's actually a page that I can look at within the federal forfeiture system to see what kind of is in the pipeline. As cases are expected to be adjudicated, we can kind of see what we anticipate coming in in the next budget year.
But that's, it's not from our city, that's from federal?
So we, we have two spots that have been allocated for task force officer positions in partnership with the depart, the Drug Enforcement Administration. We have one back right now to do, due to some staffing. We're doing our very best to try to get that person into, back into their group, so we can assure that any seizures come back to, to our community. I mean, who doesn't want to spend criminals' money instead of taxpayers' money, right? So what we're trying to do is open up that purse and think outside the box and start spending some money for our nine-one-one system or the body camera, in-car camera program. So we can kind of forecast at least what's in the pipeline right now, because it could take sometimes twenty-four, thirty-six months for these cases to be adjudicated, and this is through the federal system.
Mr. Chair, if I may add on to that, if you, if you go to page fifteen in your book.
One-five?
One-five, one-five, under the revenues tab, you'll see the confiscated monies and what we're projecting from the pages that the chief has alluded to. We're looking for approximately three hundred and thirty-seven thousand in revenue coming in the upcoming fiscal year. Now, granted, that's, that has to be adjudicated, and we're, we're tied to the courts on that, but we think that's a pretty good, that's a pretty good number for twenty-two, twenty-three.
How much comes in from local forfeitures? Like, from our, our own city?
Oh, we don't have it broken down that way, as far as the sheets go that you have there, Councilman. At the end of the day, I'm aware of, the programs here that I'm aware of is there's a state forfeiture and there's a federal forfeiture, and, and that's it. I don't know of any local forfeiture program, and I'll turn it over to the chief.
Well, the reason I'm asking, so let's say there's a bus here locally, and you confiscate, I don't know, a hundred thousand dollars, that doesn't count towards this?
It would, yes.
Or does it go to the federal?
So that, obviously, the forfeiture law has changed, I want to say eighteen, twenty-four months ago. So there's some, there's some nuances to it as far as a charging decision and other issues. For example, we have about fourteen vehicles that we're going to request council in the near future, allow us to auction off. A lot of those vehicles have been confiscated from OWIs, so drunk driving cases, fleeing eludes. Sometimes, it's easier for officers in our task forces to seize something locally versus under the federal law. So we anticipate at least one of those vehicles is a Hellcat. So that should bring in.
Give you a grand for it.
Yeah. So that should, that should bring in, you know, a fair amount of money as well to the state. So that one's harder to predict.
That's the thing, it goes to the state, doesn't come to us.
Well, when we say state forfeiture, we have to separate the monies coming in federally, they, they go in one line item, and then the monies coming in under the state forfeiture go into another line item.
But nothing goes to us directly?
That is our money. So when I say line item, I mean it goes into our budget. But there are restrictions on what we could spend that money on, right? And we never, ever want to violate any of those restrictions and get on the naughty list, either with the state or the feds.
So if we got a hundred thousand dollars out of those cars, that money.
Would go into the state forfeiture.
And it would be our money, a hundred thousand, but we got to spend it a certain way?
Yes. Actually, they changed it a little. So some of the rules have changed, they've loosened up a little bit, as far as specifically for that. You know, my previous community, my first employer, we bought a lot of squad cars with that money. So that, that's what we're trying to be good partners in pulling some of this money out of these forfeiture accounts, and what we are allowed to spend the money on, to make sure that we're, we're spending that money.
Again, you know, maybe not budgetary, but, you know, you want to auction off like that Hellcat, couldn't you just take that vehicle, say, I'm going to put this as a unmarked police car? It's a newer vehicle, things of that nature that would, we could use ourselves.
So the asset allocation rules do allow us to convert some seized property into the community.
Let's not get into.
Yeah.
Detail, but.
Yeah. But I think it's probably wiser with this one, with the price of used cars right now, to probably get it out there and see what kind of dollar we can get for it. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next up, and that's the last one, is pension, pages eighty and eighty-two.
No, no.
I'm sorry? I didn't hear what you said.
That's not the chief.
No, that, that's not the, that's a different, that'll be a different section.
Right, right.
Right. So the chief is, this concludes our presentation for the police department.
I'm sorry. So let's open up some questions. I'm sorry.
There you go, sir.
No problem. So any questions for the chief? Okay. So what I, what I'm going to do is, at the end, as we're here, I'm going to allow people, and we have like, just one more page left, and we're going to allow residents to go ahead and get up. Anybody else on Zoom? Nobody else? All right, chief?
You have Rachel.
Rachel, Rachel, if you could wait, if you don't mind, we just have two more pages. Do you have, do you have something for the chief? Yeah, go ahead, unmuted. Okay, let's go ahead and let residents.
Yes, Dave, I do have questions for the chief.
Okay.
About the police budget.
So here, you want something for the, you have something for the chief specifically, or in general? If it's in general, I'm going to go at the end, but if some specifically, police department? But I'm saying, you have something for the chief before he leaves? For comptroller. Okay. Okay. Go ahead, chief. With Rachel.
Okay. So do I have to do the name and street?
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay. Rachel Appoint, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. So I had one question about the salaries. I know we don't have the breakdown yet, but the chief and the, that's what you said, but when I edit up.
Wait, you got, you got disconnected. You want to repeat your question?
Are you there?
Yeah, now we are.
Okay. So it seems to me, when I looked at the math, that the salaries for the chief and the deputy are included in the union salaries. Are they part of the union? Because that, or where is their salary in there?
Neither I or the commissioner are a part of a union.
Okay. So then where were those salaries included on the line items? Because.
Yep, got it.
It was kind of confusing the way it was broken down.
Okay. So the chief, to answer the question, Mr. Chair, if I may, Mr. Chair, if I may, to answer the question. Okay. It's going to be part of the, the first, the five-point, if you go back to page sixty of your book, it'll be the first line within the blue, the blue box, five million, nine forty-three, one three zero. The chief and the deputy chief would be part of that line item.
So, sorry, you guys cut out for a second. So then, so the patrol command and dispatch includes all, including the chief, they're not included on the salary non-union section?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then I was confused when the mayor said that the commissioner's contract was not extended yet, because I did a FOIA for that contract, and it was extended for the full year. So is that full year amount included in the budget?
If I may? The, there is a, there is a line item for the deputy slash commissioner for a full year, for the full year.
So that full year is included in that?
Whether, whether it's for the, whether it's for a commissioner or it's for a deputy.
Or for whoever else. Okay.
That's all there.
Great. I just wanted to clarify those two points. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, Rachel. So here, you said yours is at the end. Then she had a question? Come on up.
Dropkowski, Columbia Street. Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, when I worked at the Justice Center for years, I saw one major problem, and that was with the court and the police department. The officers are getting paid overtime, which, it's fine. But is there something that we can do between the court and the police department? So on court days, we can get through these cases where we don't have officers sitting there from seven o'clock in the morning, possibly three, four o'clock in the afternoon, collecting overtime? So is there something we can do in a process to help eliminate that? I mean, I'm all for the guys getting paid what they deserve and all that stuff, but if, if we're looking for, you know, pennies and dollars here, that's one source.
Is it traffic cases you're speaking of, or criminal cases?
This was, you know, up, up on the second floor, between the two judges, Judge Pollocky and Judge Turvey. The traffic cases, I know, were done on the magistrate level downstairs. But, you know, we used to have an officer's lounge. That's how, that's how long they waited.
Yeah. So a lot of times, the, the criminal proceedings are really out of our control. We're sometimes waiting for attorneys. Some things that we might be able to do is work with the court to try to put our staff on standby, that, you know, they'd be able to rest somewhere, and then if their case is called and they do need to testify, that, you know, potentially, we can.
Yeah, you still got to pay them. That's.
So, yeah. So, I mean, it's really, it's a hard thing to, to try to dictate what the court, you know, how they go through their proceedings, but we can certainly try to partner with them as best we can to try to reduce that. I have not heard the complaints from the officers. Usually, that's one of the, when I was a young police officer, was doing police work, you know, that court time, when you want to be home sleeping, is, is pretty rough. So.
Especially the guys that were working over midnights and stuff.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, man. Thank you, man.
Well, just a comment. So today was, you know, they decriminalized the traffic offenses, many of them. Does, does Dearborn Heights do the pre-formal? All the other communities, so you want a formal hearing, you, you have a pre-formal, so the officer doesn't have to be there. But I, I would say that most communities, ninety-nine percent of the cases are all resolved with, with pleas. And, um, probably, you, you can look at the statistics on the state court administrator's office. There, even in circuit court, there are maybe fewer than ten trials a year. So it, does, do we call in? That's probably not a question for yourself. Maybe a question for Gary. Have the pre-formal, so the, the plea is negotiated and the officer doesn't have to be on standby.
So informals, officers have to come into, formal tickets or formal hearings as well, officers have to come into. I think what you're talking about is a program which is used in other communities of a ticket review process where maybe we have a staff member that goes through, looks at the tickets and tries to determine if, you know, reach out to the person that received it and try to mediate, um, you know, some type of a resolution. So I'll certainly look into that and see if that's a practice that's going on right now. And if not, what it would take for us to implement it.
Counselor, let's, let's keep it on the budget. All right, yeah. I don't want to have bar conversations. Let's, let's keep it to just budget. All right.
Oh, trouble.
Yeah, so anybody else for the chief? Come on with what?
Oh, be careful, Bob, you are. It's the court.
Thank you, chief. Chief, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, chief. Okay, next up is, and, and the last one up, uh, is pension.
Yes, page eighty, if you turn to page eighty at your book. Linda, come on up. We're gonna start on page eighty? All right. Counselor, come on up.
I appreciate the layout too, very accessible. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Tom here, Tom here.
Yeah, by way of introduction, my name's Tom Misha.
That's it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you.
Excellent. Good to see you, Tom. All right. So what we have here is this. In, in front of you, the first, the first budget on page eighty is the general government employee pension section of the general fund budget. This is funded by general, uh, by the general fund. And, uh, we do get reimbursed for parcel, partial, uh, for this department. What we have here is one part-time individual, uh, basically working, uh, twenty-five, twenty-five hours a week for fifty weeks, forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. We have here commission fees, uh, where you have board secretaries getting paid for meetings, uh, the fringe benefits associated with that. Uh, there's some supply and, um, membership dues that we pay here, uh, around seven hundred and fifty dollars. And then, uh, we have the general city investment pension professional services line. My understanding is this pays for, uh, professional services such as legal, investment brokers, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, and in total, we're asking to appropriate two hundred and sixty-six thousand, zero forty-six, uh, in this department. Uh, I'd be happy to turn it over now to council for questions.
Any questions from council?
The young lady sitting to your left is our pension administrator.
Yes, this is, this is Linda Lewis. I'm sorry, Linda, this is Linda Lewis and Tommy, and Tommy Shaw. Thank you. I apologize for that. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Good, good morning.
Morning.
Everyone. Um, haven't met, I don't think I've met everyone. My name is Linda Lewis. I'm the pension administrator for general government and police and fire. So what I do in my job is make sure that the employees, retirees and survivors are taken care of. Handling their pension, handling, uh, deaths, handling, um, investment, um, requests. Um, I move everything along. So that's, that's my role in, in this job. I do have one question or one point that I'd like to make on the budget before we move forward, if I may.
Go ahead.
There, I have a concern about the, um, the salary cap that has been indicated in this budget. David and I have talked about this. Um, I wanted to bring it to city council for, for your review. Um, my salary is capped at forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for fifty weeks, at twenty, at twenty-five hours a week for fifty weeks. That's not, uh, what the board had approved for me as part of my employment arrangement, my employment agreement. They approved me to be present for, or to work for twenty-eight hours a week for a full year. And that would make my cap at fifty thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. And that is my cap. That does not necessarily mean that I work all those hours all the time. Um, it means that that is the most that I will work and be paid for with, uh, police and fire and, uh, general government. David and I've had conversations about this, this fifty weeks and he's, he's advised me that, uh, because I'm part-time, I'm not paid for holidays or vacation days, which I understand. However, my pay was re, my cap has been reduced, um, based on a blanket analysis that I am going to take X many days and X many holidays. When the board has approved my working, uh, for being paid for whatever hours I work. For example, if there's a holiday, if there's a holiday on a Monday, generally we don't work. That may mean that I may come in on a Friday and work. That was acceptable. What this budget does is cuts my, my cap and cuts my, uh, way that I can work my hours for the city employees, retirees and survivors. Um, so I wanted to request that that cap be restored to the cap that was submitted in the budget by police and fire and general government, which was fifty thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars maximum. And that's for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. And you probably end up working depending, sometimes not less than that, more than that.
I, I'm careful to not work more. I, I understand that was the agreement that was made when I was hired, um, not, not a year ago. It's been about ten and a half months. Um, so, uh, I work my hours. If I work over, if I'm at a conference on a Sunday, I count it as time. If I have to go to the doctor, I don't, um, those types of things. So I understand being part-time that, you know, I, I don't, I'm not, I don't, I'm not allowed to take a vacation day that's paid. I understand that, but I would like that ability to manipulate my time to best serve me and, and my, and who I'm working for. My, my employees, my.
Thank you, five thousand.
Yeah, about seven, seven thousand.
The only thing I can speak for on, on there, um, I'm not, I can speak for myself. I'm not at liberty myself to make this decision right now without some sort of a total clarification and direction from the pension board, from the controllers, and even our attorneys. Of course, I respect the fact that you mentioned that, which is fine, that's great, no problem. But that's something that would have to be taken to the next level through the administration, coming back to us and then we can make a determination. Because I can't make it based on just the person themselves telling me I would need to have my salary raised, obviously.
Right, well.
But I do respect your opinion.
To the comptroller that way and he, he revised it. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I appreciate. Can you also send us an email? Can you send me an email on that, please? Okay.
Thank you, I will do that, thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Any other questions in regards to the general government employee pension on page eighty, then we're gonna go to page eighty-two next?
Counselor, Chair, I got a quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, and, and maybe it's more of a broad question, but this is the third of, you know, second or third time where somebody has requested a budget and we're getting that it's, we, we don't see, and I know you brought that up. Do we have, or does the administration or the comptroller have what each director has requested and what we're at today?
So what the councilman is referencing, comptroller, if you remember, I brought that up last week where requested budget is different than, um, we presume it must have been different than what's actual recommended budget. But yet, throughout the budget, they were put in as the same number.
Okay, so let me refresh council's memory here. Every department has come in with something. A lot of departments come in with, with as much as they can to cover what they think they need for the upcoming fiscal year. Resources are limited. We sit down with each and every department head and we iron out and they agree to this, the, the recommended number that we go, we go with.
Yeah, what, my question to you is the recommended that they request, can you send it over to council?
I don't have all of those. Okay, I don't. I didn't start the process, okay? I don't have them. So I went in with what we, what, we met with each department head, we met with each section. We came in with, uh, going through their budgets and going through their requests. And we then, we then went from there. So we would have to, I would have to ask each of the department heads to resubmit and go from there. But I can certainly tell you, yes, uh, their, their numbers in the requested column, as Ms. Lewis has, has pointed out, is, was higher, much higher, okay?
Are you telling them, like?
We talked to them. We go through it and we say, this is where we are. Uh, we just went through this again with, with the city clerk, okay? And we thought we had an arrangement and, and, and agreement. Uh, she came back and said, no, we had to go back to the drawing board and we worked that out.
Thank you.
Okay, and, um, and that, that'll be part of the final budget, okay? But then you also heard from this, uh, from the recreation department. Uh, they also said that they're looking for everything, uh, the capital. You only have so much in resources.
Look, and I do, Dave, I know you're doing your job. I know, I know you have, you're doing what's best for the interests of the residents and for the city. I completely understand that.
All right, yep.
All I'm asking, and look, sometimes it might not always work in the favor like it did in the clerk's office.
But again, we, but again, we agree to the numbers. Ms. Lewis obviously does not. Um, but we agree to the numbers when we come in front of you and that's what's, that's what's in front of you.
I, I, I get that because there is obviously a certain amount of budget and there's only so much that you could use. Whatever you've got to use, that's all you've got to use.
That's correct.
So if I walk into the mall with a hundred dollars, that's all I could spend. It doesn't matter what I want. The talk I spend is a hundred dollars. I totally get that. The only thing is though. Yeah, I don't know. Actually, I spend probably more than, I won't go there. The only thing is though, the words requested budget throughout the budget is deceiving because this implies that what somebody requests or what department requested, they got. But when in actuality, that's not what they got and, and in actuality, they had requested possibly at least quite a bit more.
Well, remember, okay, the mayor is presenting, the mayor and the administration is presenting a budget, okay? And, and we sit down and we spend a lot of time with the department to, to iron out all those issues, okay? And it's the council's job to go, oh, if this is what the, how the mayor wants to run the city as the administrator, it's your job as the council to appropriate or not appropriate. Okay, and at the end of the day, if the, the mayor's coming in saying, this is how I want to run the city, this is what you have to consider.
No, but you have to understand.
Wait a minute, if you, you, the mayor is making the decision on what services are being presented to, to, to occur.
Mrs. Buddha, and I want you to also keep in mind that the people that are coming over here that are requesting certain budgets.
Sure.
Are also from the mayor. So the mayor doesn't have a specialty in parks and recreation, so he hires a parks and recreation director.
Right.
Who has a specialty, so you have to understand that. When I see the park and recreation director, I see the image, the mirror of who, what the mayor has expected. So if the parks and recreation director is requesting a budget, let me tell you, that person's not gonna come back and say to council, my boss didn't give me what I was requested because it becomes intimidating.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, no, it does, look, at the end of the day, you have, you have professional staff presenting a professional handout to the mayor so that, and the mayor has sat in every budget meeting, almost every budget meeting that we've had, okay? Barring him being called out for certain issues on certain times. So at the end of the day, this is a professional, a, a professional system. And granted, every, whether it's the fire chief, it's the police chief, it's recreation, everybody came in with higher numbers, everybody did. And at the end of the day, they make their case to the, to the mayor and his team. There's a lot of discussion on what goes on. Remember, he's getting elected too. And he's presenting to you a complete package to what he feels is the best for, for, for the city. Now, if council wants to go through each and every, every proposal that has been submitted, that's not the role of the council.
No, but, but the budget, all I'm saying is if the budget didn't say requested, and that whole line item should have just been removed.
But at the end of the day, what happens here is we talk to the.
That's all that should have happened.
We talk to, oh, no, 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 because quite frankly, then you would have to start this process in January. Because then you're looking and you're going, why are you asking more than, why is requested lower than or higher than? And I, I'll tell you this too, there are a lot of requests that were lower.
And I agree, I agree with you, brother, because if somebody came in for higher, you'd be digging deep, what are you doing?
Right.
You're right. I, I agree with you.
You can only do.
I'm just speaking from my mind. Listen, I, I have a million questions in my head that I'm just asking.
Well, you know, you're speculating here and you're, at, at the end of the day, there's a lot of, there's a lot of input that goes into this. And I can certainly tell you, before we change a requested, a requested line, we ask for permission.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay, very good.
Okay. Thank you.
Those are, that's excellent. Good question, good, good, good thought process.
I was speculating, all I wanted to make sure was that, I'm so sorry, council chair, all I wanted to know was that all parties were aligned. That's all I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Now Linda obviously is not, okay, that's why she's here today and that's why she's here speaking with you.
Okay, so anything else, anything else on the presentation on pension from your end?
On, on the general city piece, uh, I am set.
Okay, so that'd be page.
We would do on page eighty.
Right. Okay, now page eighty-two.
Yes, we want to go to the public. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Of Ms. Ms. Lewis, nice to meet you, by the way.
Did I hear you say that you want that cap increased whether you work those hours or not?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
She wants it up to.
What I, what I'm, what I'm saying is that actually my pay is through police and fire. Um, is, is, uh, there is about thirty percent that's paid by the city government. The rest is paid by police and fire. But what I'm saying is that my cap, uh, was set at fifty thousand, nine hundred dollars. That's the maximum that I could earn in a year. And I wanted it restored to that rather than reduced because the reduction does not give me any room to, do anything that I was brought here to do and let my employment agreement.
You, you signed a contract to that effect?
We did not have a contract. We had a, uh, I was hired, I received a letter, uh, offer letter. And we discussed my, my hours and my hourly rate. Thank you.
Okay. So next up is.
The public safety, uh, public safety, general government employees pension system?
Yep.
Okay, now what you have here, now, now what I want to do, Mr. Chair, I have a, I have a handout?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, let's, let's do that at the end.
At the end, okay, very good, okay. So what you have here on the public safety pension side, um, this is the general operations. There is another gentleman that, that works the public safety pension side. Uh, this person, uh, you gotta flip the page here, sorry about that. Uh, on page eighty-two, there's another gentleman that works twenty-three hours a week for fifty weeks for the public safety, uh, PSO pension system. He does the same thing. He, he works with the retirees, he works with, uh, uh, the active employees in, in various retirement matters. Uh, we have him scheduled, uh, again, twenty-three hours a week for fifty weeks at twenty-five an hour. Uh, he's also a, a board secretary, uh, so he's picking up an additional fifty dollars per meeting for twelve meetings. Uh, there's frin, the social security fringe benefit and there are supplies here. So to run the office, you have, so to run this section, you have two, um, you have two, two individuals. One handling, uh, general city and leaning into public safety. And then you have another person who's run, who's really working with public safety. And these guys do a, a, a nice job for us. And they, they work with the retirees and they work with the actives to, to make sure pensions are run smoothly. Any questions here on page?
So any questions on page eighty or eighty-two before we go to the residents from the council members?
This is a, this is a good presentation. And I just, I want Mrs. Lewis to know, and I'm not saying, I, I'm not the negotiator, but I know that the mayor doesn't like to have to make such tough decisions. You know, it could be for this, it could be for this budget and next year's budget could be different.
Now, Mrs. Ch, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Chair, we're gonna go into the piece now for public act.
So, so, yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and walk through. Okay, so.
Tom, don't go.
At this particular point. Well, let's, let's go ahead and first go into questions from the audience. I'm gonna go to questions from Zoom. Um, and then for those, um, what the controller was referencing, there was a document that was dropped off to us council members about a week, week and a half ago, uh, by resident Mr. Sohairi Al-Hak. I gave that document to the controller and asked him to put some of the answers to those questions together. Um, and that's what's gonna be presented in a little bit, so I'm not sure, Mr. Al-Hak, if you'd like to wait till he finishes his presentation or do you have questions before that? Yeah, it's probably better, okay, is there anybody else in the audience that has any questions in regards to the two pension pages? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, so, go ahead, come on up. And if you do me a favor, John, please, of course, state your name, city and street.
Yeah, John Riley, Amboy Street.
What you are here as, are you here as a pension board member?
As a resident and a trustee of the board, but I just, I think the, the only discrepancy is, is that, you know, there's fifty-two weeks in a year and there's not fifty weeks in a year, and so I think that's the situation where they're paid, you know, we, 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 we have an agreement with her to work, you know, these many hours for fifty-two weeks in a year, not fifty, so that, I think that's the difference.
You're referencing in regards to Linda Lewis, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So that's all.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay, any, okay, so now I'm gonna have the controller, he's gonna, um, there's nobody else on Zoom. No, I did ask earlier, I did ask, there's nobody. So now we're gonna go ahead and, and get into, uh, the controller has a presentation put together which answers a lot of the questions that were put forward. There were eight questions at the time, uh, by Mr. Al-Hak, but go ahead, controller.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, I want to, uh, turn your attention, we're gonna cover the retiree uh costs that the general fund and the Public Act three forty-five levy covers. So if you turn your, your, to page thirty-two of your budget book, we'll start there. Okay, and as we come to the various items, I'll, I'll have handouts and we can, um, and you can have the additional information. So on page thirty-two, you'll notice, um, line item one oh one, two hundred, seven one six point two hundred. They'll, it'll be hospital dash gen go, okay, what that is, is you're paying for general city retiree healthcare. So we are obligated under various contractual, uh, agreements to pay for healthcare retirement for retirees. And with that, uh, you can see on line item seven one six point two hundred, uh, one point three eight four million dollars. Uh, that covers the general city retirement and that's paid from the operating levy of the city, okay? One point three eight four. The next, uh, the next line that I want to draw your attention to, uh, is, as you come down page thirty-two, you'll see Public Act three forty-five insurance. So what happens here is this is the public safety retirees, uh, insurance cost. We're estimating through, we have a, we have a, a professional coming out of Plant Moran that estimates these costs for the upcoming fiscal year, Mr. Tryonfi. And with that, uh, we're estimating three million, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. Now, with that being said, I'm gonna pass out to you the, um, the estimates that were made for retiree healthcare.
Thank you.
This is the support documentation that we receive to build the budget.
Can you do me a favor, controller, if you have an extra one? If you could put them up maybe at the podium this way in case a resident wants one, they could grab one?
I know you guys. Do you want to share? Okay, very good. Okay. So there, this is what we received from Mr. Tryonfi over at Plant and Moran. And we tie out the retirees, uh, you can see the five point one four eight million, so if you add the one million, three eighty-four, zero twenty-one and the three million, seven sixty-four, seven thirty-two, that gives you what we think is going to be the, um, the, uh, the, the healthcare costs for, for the city. And we would levy in the Public Act three forty-five levy, levy for the three point seven six four million dollars in retiree healthcare. Now, when we levy for that, the expenses and the revenue stay in the general fund. Those dollars don't go, don't go to the, to the trust or they don't go to the, uh, the trust board. Uh, we do run the expenses through, but at the end of the day, I don't want to get into an accounting situation here, but at the end of the day, the Public Act three forty-five, the portion of Public Act three forty-five levy to cover this cost stays here, uh, in the general fund. Now, with that being said, if we move through, uh, the next line item, one oh one, two hundred, seven twenty-two point zero zero two, three forty-five expenses and, uh, uh, council chair Pro Tem had questions, uh, when this first came up, when we were at the, the ten thousand foot level looking down at the budget, uh, questions regarding the six hundred sixty-three thousand, two hundred dollar number. Uh, this number is the operating expenses of the public safety portion of the pension system for, uh, for their operation in the upcoming fiscal year. Now, I'm gonna pass this out. This is the resolution passed by the board. Thank you. All right, thank you, Linda. Okay, with this being said, um, we have Mr. Mashaw here and, and of course, Mr. Riley is here also from the board. Uh, if you go to the page, the, uh, on the handout, you will see the proposed budget that the board requested uh, for professional consulting fees, uh, six hundred and two thousand dollars, uh, commission fees, fifty thousand dollars. Uh, travel and education, ten thousand, dues and memberships, five hundred, office supplies, three hundred, for a total of six sixty-three, one ninety-one. And that ties to what you see on the line item, uh, on line item, um, one oh one, two hundred, seven twenty-two point zero zero two. Uh, any questions here, Mr. Mashaw's here, Mr. Riley's here, any questions regarding the expenses?
Sure. Professional and consultant services for this coming year is over a half million dollars. Please explain, it seems like a crazy number.
Oh, I'm sorry, Linda, go ahead.
Okay, if I may, um, six hundred and two thousand dollars, six hundred and two thousand dollars, you're asking about that.
Yeah, well, it's five hundred and fourteen for twenty-two, but for twenty-three, yes, it's six hundred and two thousand.
So the, um, increase is due to the increase in cost to manage the fund. Our, we have, uh, investment manager, we have fund managers, we have, uh, several funds that are baked into this estimate. So what I did was I took last year's, I mean, I took the, uh, the invoices for each fund manager, our consultant, our, our, our bank, Comerica Bank, our legal, which would be, uh, Times Group. I took those invoices, came up with the annual number that we paid for last, for this year past. And I added five percent increase on top of that for the year coming. And that's what we, uh, that's what I came up with, I rounded it up. And if you'd like to know the different companies, I can give you, I can give you, uh, a list of who we pay. Um, it's a variety of investment, uh, fund managers and.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be interested in that, because you got an additional fifty thousand commissions, so we're talking about way a bit of money, I, I, I honestly.
The value, I mean, what we pay our managers for investment fees are based on the value of the investments that they're managing. And as we all know, the stock market has run up. And so when we're paying the manager, it's based on the values of the investment of the fund. And so, y- you know, the fund is over two hundred million dollars now, you know, last year we may have been sitting at one ninety. And so you can see that because they're managing more funds, um, we pay a little bit more in investment fees for the funds that they're managing. And that's the great reason for the increase. And, and so we're also asking the, the administrator to predict kind of what's gonna happen in the future, well, you know, obviously the stock markets come down, but the stock market could turn around and go back up if this Ukraine war stops, if inflation dains. So you, we never really know where you're going, so it's a, it's a, it's a budget and she uses the December invoices and projects four quarters at that to come up with the fu, with the money, with the budget.
As a banker, so we're paying almost ninety thousand dollars more for the taxpayers to be a banker.
Not a banker, they're investing our funds, we're earning money, we're investing them, I mean, how, how, I mean.
Well, I understand it, but the taxpayer.
Mutual fund.
But the taxpayers are still paying that.
Well, who, well, who do you want to pay it, I don't understand.
Mr. Chairman.
I pay my own, I pay my own, you know, I'm just saying, it's, you know, you can look at me like that.
Well, we're investing, I mean, we're.
Mr. Chairman.
I understand that, I, I, I understand, but don't look at me like that, that's very condescending. Very condescending, no, you're looking at me like I'm stupid or something.
Well, I, I, because I don't understand, you pay your own, I don't, I mean, we have a two hundred million dollar fund.
Ninety thousand dollars more.
We, well, I mean, how do you, I want us to not invest the money, I don't, that's what I don't understand.
So the more money we have, the more money we gotta pay, is what you're.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Okay, that's crazy.
Thank, thank you, I mean, I just wanted to, I'm sure, my, sharing the comment with the board, um.
I'm paying that money as a taxpayer myself, okay, as a taxpayer, I'm paying that money. And that's what I, I'm trying to figure out, the, you know, if we were gonna hire a consultant, let him consult at a certain fee, a, a, at a, straight out fee, just like we do any contractual service.
A- as you understand, um, asset-based arrangements with your professional consultants is, is the norm. Um, in terms of paying your, your managers to manage your assets, as you understand, with over two hundred million dollars, um, it's actually a good thing when you pay, when, when the fee goes up as a percentage of assets, because you're making money. Your, your assets are going up, so it, from the standpoint of your managers being paid, it's no different than, you know, what a general fidelity or, uh, Vanguard, they get a percentage of assets as, as, as management fees. And so the structure and the board is very cognizant of making sure that the fee arrangements that they do pay to their managers are, are, are reasonable and within industry standard and is most efficient way to do it. Um, it's just an unfortunate, it's a cost of doing business, you need professionals to, to manage the assets. Um, and I can tell you that from the management, the fees are, the fees are industries low as well as the performance you're, you're, that you receive is, is been significantly, um, as an outperformer. So they're, they are cognizant as the pension boards of the costs, um, and they want to manage the assets as, as efficient and effectively as possible. Um, but, but it does cost money to do that and when you manage a fund of, you know, two hundred million dollars, that, i- i- it's a significant dollar amount, which I understand, the, the numbers, but it is a, it just.
Lot of money to the taxpayers, just, you know, administration fees.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, was there anything else from your end, uh, controller?
Um, yes, there is, thank you, Linda. Yes, there's, we have one more, um, we have, uh, one more, one more line item here and one more handout, so as you come down. Any other questions on six sixty-three, we're set, so then with that, um, the next line, one oh one, two hundred, seven twenty-two point zero zero three, and then the following line item, one oh one, two hundred, seven twenty-two point zero zero four. Um, the one million, zero sixty-two, five hundred and the four forty-four, nine hundred, uh, that is your OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefit pre-funding, uh, dollars for the public safety pension system and for the general city pension system. Now, we are in the midst of doing the full-blown, um, actuarial study with Nihard at this time. So we've appropriated, uh, the same dollars as last year to contribute again. And remember, we're doing this in accordance with Public Act, State Public Act two oh two of twenty seventeen. So we're, this, this is the city's contribution, uh, to, to, to pay for future on, other post-employment benefits, which are life and health insurance for.
That's why it has to be forty percent funded.
Correct, that's right, and in accordance with state law. So with that being said, um, I don't, I have the fine, what I have now, what I'd like to hand out to everyone is the final costs that support the Public Act three forty-five levy.
Thank you.
I do have an extra one here. Okay, so as, as you can see here, um, when you look at the lines, you have the employer contribution rate for the police department. The two point nine oh seven million is the, that's, we talked about this morning, which is the, uh, employer contribution for, for police and the two two seven nine, six eighty-six is for fire. Uh, and that comes out to five million, one eighty-six, nine thirty-five, and that comes right from, and I'm, guys, I'm sorry, I got the report before you did. But I needed it for the, for the presentation here. Uh, the, um, the five million, one eighty-six, nine thirty-five on line one there, uh, is the recommended contribution from the, from the public safety actuary.
This is recent, correct?
This is as of, that's, as of Wednesday of last week, this is it, this is the numbers, okay? Now, again, we, we adjusted the budget for these new numbers this morning. You can see the pay-go healthcare, three million, seven sixty-four, seven thirty-two, and you've just seen the line item uh, in the two hundred section of the budget. And then you have the Public Act three forty-five operating expenses that we just went through, again, in the two hundred section of the operating budget. And then you see the OPEB contribution for the PSO portion only, uh, for, for one million, sixty-two thousand. So we're looking at ten point six seven seven million in Public Act three forty-five costs that can be levied for. Uh, and we're estimating based upon, uh, based upon the assessor's numbers for tax value for the July twenty-two levy. We're looking at seven dollars and fifty, fifty, seven point five zero five nine cents, because you, you have to break it out four digits to the right. And as you can see, you, last year's numbers for twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, we are looking at eleven point two zero three million dollars for a levy of eight point eight nine. Now, the good news is tax values went up, okay? That also helps in driving the rate down and you can see that effect also, so, so costs went down, tax values went up, the rate goes down. Uh, and, and that's what you see with this.
Ultimately lower taxes for the residents.
That's correct, with, with the change in, that, that we went through this morning, uh, that, that would have been, that's a ninety dollar annual savings to the average taxpayer here in, um, Dearborn Heights. So, uh, so when we, if, if I may, now, if you look in your book, you'll have the resolution. You have, you'll have the resolution in your book, uh, the proposed draft, I don't know, so you'll see in your book, you'll have the proposed draft resolution, it'll be in the front of your book.
So for those coun, so for those council members, uh, I had a conversation with the controller about this. And on the resolution, because we're using a different format than had been used in the past, I asked the controller at one of our last meetings to go over that particular resolution, which I also spoke with the Chief of Staff, Mariana. Uh, and they said they had plans to go over it, but I said I want it go, gone over in layman's terms.
Yeah.
In very specific so that we as council members know what we're specifically approving.
But we're, I'm not gonna do that at this moment.
No, not today, not today.
No, not today, right, but what I want to point out on page one of the resolution, you'll see the, we, we line up the rates for you that are gonna go on the tax bill for the upcoming fiscal, July one levy. for the upcoming fiscal, July one levy, and you'll see eight dollars and ten cents, eight point one zero eight six. If you see that on page one of your resolution, that's gonna, I'm gonna change that to seven dollars, seven point five zero...
Five nine.
Five nine. Thank you, sir.
Great, great.
Okay?
Any questions on this?
All right.
Before we go ahead and go to general questions. So nobody in the audience? Anybody on Zoom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Wait, go ahead, John. So after John goes up, um, we're gonna go ahead and have, um, anybody in the audience, and then after, anybody on Zoom that has questions on any of the budget items that we spoke about, uh, previously. Go ahead, Counselor.
I just, I just, um, I saw that the Michigan Municipal League, um, saying that the Michigan House passed a grant program for some underfunded pensions. Well, our pensions are not underfunded, but obviously, we all know that the healthcare plan is. And so I think through our legal council, we're gonna follow that legislation, and hopefully, we will apply for any grants that would be available for the city to capture and, or work with the city administration to get that grant money into, to help fund the underfunded, um, OPEB costs that we know. And so I, hopefully, uh, like I said, we're gonna be following that legislation. Hopefully something comes about with that. So that's...
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, yep.
Thank you. Okay, any questions from the audience?
Please state your name, city, and street.
Zuhair Abdalha, three five four Rosemary. I did send the chair and the council eight questions. I'm not going to go through all of them, but I'm going to just, uh, ask the necessary ones. Just, uh, for Councilman Baydun, if we want to make comparison between the salaries of our city and other cities, it will be beneficial to all of us. If we look at the seventeen communities who have a drop program and look at their base salaries, then you can see a clear picture that our police officers, really, they are making excellent benefit, which is, I believe, one of the best in the state of Michigan as a whole state. When somebody serves twenty-five years, then he serves, if he's an officer, less than sergeant, serve five extra years, and they bank their sali, their pension, and they, they collect the salary, then they walk away after five years or seven years, between seven hundred thousand to over a million dollars. That is a huge benefit which doesn't exist in Dearborn or in any other place, because they don't allow them to serve that five or seven years, depend on their rank, and collect two checks and bank them and walk away with that sum of money. So if we want to compare, let's compare to those seventeen cities with a, a drop program and the one without. We will find out...
But I'd like to add, though.
Yes.
Because I, you don't want the residents getting the impression, like, let's use the number of seven hundred thousand. You don't want the residents to get the impression that the city's giving them seven hundred thousand. There's money that's being put in from their own money. I'm talking about the particular officer's own money into...
I'm not saying the ci, the city is paying to the pension...
Right.
Council chair, and they taking basically a check from the city for their job and check from the pension. So they are taking two checks.
Right, no, but what I'm saying is, it's seven hundred thousand that the particular, let's say, um, captain chief, whatever walks away from, is, let's use a seven hundred thousand dollar figure, is not seven hundred thousand that's, uh, the city's paying them directly. There's money that's been paid from...
In one way or another, yes, the resident paid that money. The taxpayer paid that money because that money was put into the pension by the city. Then when you give them five years or seven years, depend on their rank, they take from the pension, from that fund, and they put it in the drop program, which they collect benefit on it and interest on it too. So when we, all I'm saying, when we want to compare, let's compare, I am was giving them salary, if you give them, in my calculation, twenty thousand dollars each police officer today on their salary, in the long run, if they do not collect seven or five years from the pension, we will be ahead as a city. We will not be putting more money. And I would ask anybody actuary to do this calculation, you find out the taxpayers will be ahead and pay less money for that. That's why I am against the drop program, and that's why I ask the administration to eliminate it and make 401K, because that will be a huge saving for the residents.
On the other hand, though, just to be a devil's advocate...
Yes.
There is some advantages to the drop program. So when you have somebody that is in a skilled position, such as a chief, um, you know, whoever it is that's in, in the city that, that has a skilled position and has twenty, thirty, whatever it is, years of experience, that same person can go, even if they're receiving a pension here, can go and work for hypothetically, Livonia, correct? So to me, if he's a valuable member of our city administration, you don't want somebody with that much skillset and experience going over to Livonia. He can still collect both, both fees, because he could collect a salary in Livonia hypothetically and a pension here. Instead, we're keeping him here and, and, and keeping his skillset, knowledge, and experience to our advantage. I'm not telling you it's a perfect program, but what I'm telling you is, there is some advantages too. It's not all this.
I agree with you hundred percent, but at the same time, and the opposite token, you will not, you will not be able to hire and you pay people and train them, you know, because you are stopping hiring new people for five or seven years. And if within seven, all this time, twenty-five years of service, the police chief or captain or sergeant did not train those people who are coming from, you know, the street to the, our police department, if they didn't train them enough to become sergeant and the, uh, you know, lieutenants and captains, that means they failed in their job. I agree, we want to keep the, the expertise, but at the same time, you want to give a chance to the new graduate and the new faces, which you pay them lot less than the ones who are in the hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
So th, this is my argument for you, that I would like to see new faces and give them, give them, you know, five or ten thousand dollars more in salary e, every year to attract good officers, good graduate. And you will be, if you do the right calculation, and I ask any actuary to do that, I ask the city to do that, you will find out that we will come ahead and we will make more money. The other thing, uh, we have passed resolution, I believe, the city council, to keep two months of assigned money in the budget or sixteen percent. Did we allocate that?
Mr. Chair, if you look at the, uh, if you look at the proposed, when you look at the proposed resolution, uh, you'll notice on the second page of the general fund, uh, the second page of the resolution, for the general fund, we have restricted and unrestricted, uh, we have restricted and unrestricted fund balance. Uh, and if you look at that, we're at four million, three ninety-seven is the estimated, six seventy-nine divided by fifty, uh, is it revenues or is it expenses?
It should be revenue, and it should be shown as expenses.
No, wait a minute. No, 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 no. That's not the question. The percent, is it based on expenses or is it based on revenues?
On revenue.
Revenue. Five, seven, five, six, nine, seven, five, nine. We're at seven point six percent reserve. That's what we have, seven point six. And then there's the restricted piece of another four million dollars. So if you look at the full boat, you're looking at almost fifteen percent. So when you take both restricted and unrestricted, you're sitting on fifteen percent.
So you did allocate for it in the budget?
There is no, we do not, uh, th, this is a budget. Okay, this is, this is not the balance sheet. This is the income statement. And you don't budget for a restriction, uh, i, in this document. If the council decides to reserve unrestricted fund balance, that's a separate action. And that is not part of the prod, that is not part of the product given to them.
I'm just trying to follow the resolution, which we passed and we agreed with the state on it, that we are within our commitment to the state of sixteen percent.
And please remember this, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Okay, please remember this. You can only restrict what you have. You don't have it, you can't restrict it.
That, I understand.
Very good. We're on the same page then.
I'm not saying restrict it, assign it.
Sign, restrict, however you want to, set it up. If you don't have it, you can't do it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Now, uh, we have, our contract was the police and fire. It call in the drop program and the pension. It, it calls for five percent guaranteed for the drop program. Now, did we account for this in case? The market goes south and it doesn't make five percent. Did we take into account in our budget that five percent? It's two point one million dollars.
The answer to that question is no. And we wouldn't. And I wouldn't recommend that, to do that with the council at all. So at the end of the day, what would happen is, the council, I would recommend to the council that they would make a request to the pension board to, uh, liquidate investment if they had to in order to make that. But at the end of the day, in order to provide basic city service, you cannot set aside two point one million dollars for that, for that type of requirement. I would hope that with the management fees that we're paying, that that would not happen.
I hope not, but I...
Very good. Thank you.
For that reason, I would request from the administration during negotiation, if this is not necessary, to eliminate it from the, uh, from the contract. Why should we have a liability or possible liability in the future of over two million dollars over our head? And if they never asked for it, let's take it out during the negotiation totally. It shouldn't be there. My last question is, the CSO projects, you, uh, we have around over three, thirty million dollars for future projects. We have around, um, I would say, sixteen million dollars from the bond, and what's left, whatever. Uh, are we going to bond some extra money to complete those projects? Are we going to budget for it or we want?
At this point in time, we do not have anything more appropriated for any additional projects, uh, in the, in this twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Uh, at the end of the day, if there is, i, if there are more projects to be done, I'm sure, uh, the city's engineer will come in and make specific recommendations as to what should be done, uh, and how, and then obtain the necessary estimates, uh, in order to, uh, uh, be able to determine what type of, whether it's bonding, or it's rates, or it's, uh, one-time cash, uh, whatever's the type of means of financing, he would help with the, with the controller's help, uh, come up with the financing for those types of projects. So at the end of the day, what's been appropriated, uh, and we're gonna get into that next meeting, uh, what's there is there. Uh, my understanding is, uh, there's, there is some bond proceeds left, but there is one more project to be done, and Mr. Dib is working on that, uh, right now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everybody, for giving me the extra time to ask my question. Thank you, Mayor, for allocating money for the maintenance of all the properties the city owned, because it's about time that we have a program to maintain every building, every place in this city, and to budget for it. I thank you for it.
Anybody else in the audience? Come on up. Um, Mike, I know you, Mike, but, uh, always, as I, I always ask people that go up to the podium, if they are somehow, in any way, shape, or form affiliated with the city, I always ask them to say if they're speaking as a city person or as a resident.
Just as, just as a resident.
Okay, go ahead. Name, city, and street.
Mike Blackburn, Arnold Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, a few things I've said at previous council meetings in the past, um, we know, um, previous council meetings, people talked about, uh, union contracts not being filled and, um, being, uh, passed. And, uh, the mayor had said that if he had to give, um, union members raises, that the city would have to file for bankruptcy. There's also a quote, um, a few meetings back, that, um, you can either have quality leadership, or you can pay your employees a living wage or half and half, and you need to choose wisely. I implore the council to choose wi, wisely. We cannot, as a city, afford to pay top dollar for department heads when we have rank-and-file employees making dirt wages. Um, you have to find a way to balance, whether it's paying your employees a living wage or half and half, try and find that balance where you can get some ha, ha, half and half, where employees, especially ones without contracts, that there's, if I believe right now, there's three contracts that this city is negotiating with, there's two more expiring June thirtieth, and one of them's mine. So there's five contracts, you got a lot of employees that are being hit with inflation, everything else, that needs some kind of boost. Um, you talked about low start, start, starting wa, wages for police officers and stuff. Um, other cities have hired, um, starting wages because they cut their top-out years from five to three. Maybe you can look at that. You can, there, I've seen other cities, they are hiring, they're offering signing bonuses. Um, maybe say you should think of sign, signing bonuses after six months or a year. I know there are changes to C, CDL law to, so to hire, uh, laborers down at DPW is gonna be harder because of changes in C, CDL law. Maybe more paid training, and thank you.
So obviously, for purposes of not negotiating contracts, none of us can comment on this, obviously. At the same time, just to clarify, anything with, uh, administration and, uh, in the current contract negotiations, um, I've asked the council members to stay away from the negotiations part, because that's something between the union members and administration, at which point, once an agreement comes up between all parties, then it comes forward to us as a council body to approve it or, you know, possibly, possibly deny it. And that's when we would possibly speak of it. But at this point, obviously, we can't comment on that. So thank you, though. Any other members of the audience? Controller, you have a question?
You want to?
Nobody else? Okay. Anybody on Zoom that has any questions or public comments? Okay, going once, going twice. Okay. Ross up?
Mr. Chair, that concludes our presentation for today.
Thank you very much. Controller, I, I do want to commend you in, in your department. You've really, uh, have done a very, very good job in, in presentation, graphics, and uh, handouts.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.